Chair of the Hillsborough County School Board, I want to welcome you to Hillsborough County Public Schools. We serve more than 200,000 students, including children starting with our early learning programs and continuing with adults through our workforce programs.
I'm Karen Perez, the school board's vice chair. Our district is the seventh largest in America and our team is made up of 24,000 people working at close to 250 sites across the county. Nuestro distrito es el séptimo más grande de los Estados Unidos y el tercero más grande del estado de Florida. Nuestro equipo está formado por 24 millones de personas que trabajan en cerca de 250 escuelas en todo el condado.
Our district is diverse and dedicated. Our board meetings are held in our board auditorium on select Tuesdays at 4:00 P.M. The best way to serve our students and our community is to involve you, the public, in what we do.
You are welcome to meet or email any of our board members and follow our district on social media. School board meetings are covered live by Hillsborough Schools, TV on Spectrum 635 and Frontier Channel 32.
Meetings are also streamed live on our website at hillsboroughschools.org. Closed captioning is provided on all broadcasts and past meetings are available in our online archive.
We are interested in what the public has to say. We'll include time for audience comments before we address our business items. Our agenda and any supporting materials can be viewed online in advance. They are posted seven days before each meeting on our website at hillsboroughschools.org.
Our vision is preparing students for life, and that means all students every day. Todos los estudiantes todos los días. Thank you for your interest in education. With your help, we are making decisions that shape our community's future.
The board meeting of July 8th, 2025 is called to order. Member Perez will now lead us in a moment of reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a board member and licensed clinical social worker, I'm deeply saddened by the tragic loss of 107 lives in Texas flood on July 4th. As a parent who has sent my children to enjoy summer camps, and I understand them horrendous as well, our hearts go out to the families and loved ones affected by this devastating event. In times of tragedy and hardship, it is important to remember the strength and support that can come from communities near and far. Just as our own community in Florida has felt the effects of natural disasters, we are grateful for the support and solidarity shown by others across different states. Let us continue to stand together, offering compassion, empathy, and assistance to those in need as we navigate these challenging times together. And as we come together today, please let us take a moment of silence to honor the memory of those who lost their lives in Texas. Thank you. Please stand with me, the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Member Perez. We have one withdrawn item today, 503 Student Code of Conduct. And I need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. I have a motion by Member Gray and a second by Member Washington. Any discussion? If not, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present. We have one set of minutes to be approved today, June 17th, 2025, school board meeting. I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes. I have a motion by Member Combs and a second by Member Perez. Any discussion? If not, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. Board members, I'd like to go over the format of today's meeting. As a reminder, we're a nonpartisan board who believe that all children can be empowered to learn and to succeed, and our decisions will be made with that understanding. To pave the way for efficient agenda statements and questions, board members will have five minutes to speak with 30 seconds for final thoughts. Afterwards, the superintendent can respond, and if you have further questions, you're asked to get back in the queue. Member Perez will now read the board guidelines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we begin this afternoon's meeting, please allow me to quickly review the format of our school board meetings. Please silence all electronic devices. There are speakers in the room behind me that allow board members to hear the meeting upon stepping away from the dais. This meeting can be viewed with closed captioning on the live webcast, on cable TV, and on video monitors here in the auditorium. It can also be viewed with closed captioning on online video archive.
Thank you. We have one item scheduled for a time certain at 6:00 P.M. That's employee and student input. Public comment: The board welcomes comments from citizens and values your input to the board. In order to provide the most comprehensive response to your comments, our staff will follow up and keep our board informed about these responses. Our school board respects the public's right to speak to the board, and we appreciate you taking your time to be here. You have the right to speak about any issue you like, and you will not be interrupted. However, any behavior intended to interrupt the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be allowed, and we do request that you focus on the issues. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. This afternoon, each speaker will have three minutes. Reminder that your three minutes start when you begin speaking. When there are 30 seconds left, you'll see a yellow light on the lectern, and a red light and a chime will indicate when your time is up. I'll now call up the first five speakers.
Madam Chairwoman, board members, real pleasure to be here. Louis Viera, obviously on Tampa City Council. Part of my voice is I was getting over a cold, and for most men, colds are very devastating experiences. And that was true for me, so there you go, right? But I'm here today to support strongly an effort spearheaded by Board Member Washington to rename the auditorium at Jefferson High School after our late wonderful colleague, Councilwoman Gwen Henderson, who passed on not too long ago. I had the pleasure of serving with her for some time, and you know, Councilwoman Henderson was a woman of great passion. She was a very, very strong leader, and she wore a lot of hats. One of the top hats she wore was obviously a public school teacher and an advocate for our kids in public schools. She loved our public schools because our public schools are a place where kids from all backgrounds, no matter your income, no matter your faith, or where you come from, or what language you speak, that you can get a shot at the American dream, and that's what she believed in. She was a big believer in opportunity and equity for people. She wore a lot of hats in terms of experiences that she had. She was a big champion of our Black History, her Black English bookstore, or especially our ignored history. She was a big champion of Carver City, a part in Tampa where a lot of returning African-American veterans of World War II and Korea came home to raise families like the Henderson family. But one of the biggest hats that she wore was being a very proud Jefferson dragon, along with our friend Charlie Miranda who's here. We've had a lot of city council members, Capin, Suarez, Miranda, Henderson, who are very proud Jefferson dragons. My dad actually went to Jefferson, Old Jefferson, for six months when he came here from Cuba in 1960, the old Jefferson. But you know, this is a fitting tribute for her because of our public schools, her championing public education, her championing our children, and just always. I mean, anytime somebody went to the microphone and spoke about Jefferson, you would get a shout out, and I emphasize the word shout, a shout out from Councilwoman Henderson because she loved being a Jefferson dragon. So I'd urge you all to support it, and I know all y'all here, and all y'all got good hearts, and so I know that you will support this because it's the right thing to do for a very good woman. So thank you guys very much for your time, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Charlie Miranda, Tampa City Council member. I just want to thank all seven of you for making Hillsborough County a better place to live through education. Gwen Henderson had the same thing in mind, not yesterday, but every day. She worked hard to make sure that the kids, through her years of being in public education, were the best they can be when they left school. However, in my 31 years on and off of council, I can tell you another thing. She was a best-prepared council member on her first year than anyone I've ever worked with, that includes myself. She was something to deal with. She had a feeling about life, about teaching the kids, no matter where they came from, no matter what color, what weight, what height, to be the best they can be, and no one can take that away from her. She was a natural-born educator that tried to make life better for not only those kids, but for the whole community. She had a feeling in life, in fact, the first year she was elected chairman of the CRA. That's eight different areas of the city that share the revenues to make that area better than what it was before the money came in for them. So she was very well-versed, and I hate to say it, but to my left, the biggest dragon around. Right, Ms. Ayers? Thank you for being who you are. Thank all of you. Because the auditorium, I hope that it passes. I can see by the smiles on your faces, you've got an excellent chance. I remember most, I remember most what people don't say than what they say. And the next thing I remember most, being a dragon, is what you say with your mouth and what you say with your body. And your body language tell me it's a done deal. But I want to thank you very much. I don't want to put the pressure on you, but here it is. I want to thank your fine attorney, Mr. Porter, and your staff. You guys were wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark Clutholargo. Your agenda used to be like the pinealys. Here, you get the figures. It tells you how much the things are, but you like to keep them in the dark. And what a joke you're caring about the calamity in Texas. What caused extreme rainfall flooding in Texas hill country? Well, you building your schools the way you do, that's what does it. Says here, waters in the Gulf are often three, four, or five degrees warmer than normal. At one point this year, sea surface temperatures in the Gulf of Texas and Louisiana were more than eight degrees above normal. As has been shown time and time again, event after event, climate change is the leading to wetter, more extreme precipitation events. Oh, think about Milton. Yeah. Well, see, when you make your stupid buildings that belch more carbon into the atmosphere, that's what makes these events. And of course, here you are, all wearing coats. When we have a heat index over 100 degrees and you buy more air conditioning to be comfortable, and the carbons belched into the atmosphere. Oh, how stupid is that? Oh, so sad. And you know, you have things like humanity's dying. Yeah, cause and effect, the correlation. See, the only way your school buildings should look is like these buildings here. That's the only way. You go over to the Mediterranean, you won't see any buildings looking other than this. Boy, you people are stupid.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I bring you greetings from the Danley and Henderson family. My name is Velda Henderson, and I'm a proud resident of Hillsborough County, a graduate of Thomas Jefferson High School, a school counselor for Hillsborough County Public Schools. But most importantly, I'm the sister of Gwendolyn Henderson. I'm truly honored to speak with you about why naming the Thomas Jefferson High School Auditorium in Gwen's honor. It's a fitting tribute to her extraordinary contributions to education, the Jefferson community, and the broader Tampa area. I've narrowed it down to just five compelling reasons why this recognition is so well-deserved. A lifetime of dedication of education. For 25 years, Gwen dedicated herself to shaping the lives of countless students at Jefferson. She wasn't just a teacher, she was a mentor, advisor, advocate for student success. Her impact went far beyond academics, creating a profound and lasting influence. Culturally and community advocacy. Gwen was a champion for cultural pride and community engagement. She founded the Historically Black Colleges and Universities Club and the Naturally Aware, Proud, and Strong Girl Empowerment Organization, empowering students to embrace their heritage and envision better futures. Impact Beyond the Classroom. She led initiatives like the Mr. and Mrs. Jefferson Scholarship Pageant, National Technical Honor Society, and Future Business Leaders of America, providing students with opportunities to excel in extracurricular activities and develop life skills. Her lasting relationships with students. Gwen's deep connections with the students endured long after graduation. She was always there for them, whether offering assistance, attending life milestones, or providing guidance. Her tough love calling from Raggedy when they didn't live up to their potential became a term of endearment, and her mentorship continued to shape their lives. A true dragon at heart. The motto, "Once a dragon, always a dragon," was more than a phrase to Gwen. It was a reflection of her deep connection to Jefferson. When the 2010 varsity football team won their state championship, they honored her with the championship ring, symbolizing how she impacted every aspect of student life. Renaming the auditorium after Gwendolyn Henderson would not only honor her decades of service, but also send a powerful message to students that their potential is limitless. It would serve as a lasting reminder that the spirit of love, dedication, and empowerment she instilled in the Jefferson community lives on within those very walls where she served. Thank you for making the motion to rename the high school auditorium after our beloved Gwendolyn Gwen Henderson.
Thank you. Can I call off speakers seven through 11? And next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, board members, superintendent. Once again, I'm Tina Williams Brewster. I'm also very familiar with Ms. Gwendolyn Harris. I'm also a dragon mom times three. So she was, in honor of her, I'd like to also approve of them doing right by Ms. Henderson. You may not have always liked her approach, but one thing I can honestly say about Ms. Henderson, she loves students, and she went above and beyond to make sure that those students always came first. Which leads me into what I'm saying. As we begin a new chapter of this school year, I hope that we remember our ESC students, our ESC students and parents. We shouldn't have to continue to come up here and work extra hard to make sure that our children get services that they need. Not services that they're entitled to, but services that they need. So this year, I'm, you know, aware that we're going to have some changes in Gaither, and I'm going to be holding your feet to the fire. So you're not going to get rid of me. I'm proud to say I'm a grandmom now, so get ready. If you think I was crazy about my kids, wait till grandma comes through. So I'm not going anywhere, but I just wanted to make a shout out that our ESC parents and 504 parents, our students are still not getting what they need. I have godchildren. So I'm still around. Blake needs some work. We got to do some work, so if you want to get rid of me, I'm a, all the administrators, we're coming for you. The people behind me, they're not as nice. Let's do better by our students. They deserve it. If you're feeling some type of way about students, then ask yourself, why did you get into education? If you can honestly say it's to earn a paycheck, you're in the wrong field. It is students first. Every step that we make should be about students. Parents are not your enemies. We're here to be partners. So if you have a parent like me and you just can't stand them, take a step back and see what are the issues you haven't addressed? What's the why? Let's be partners and not enemies. It's not meant to be like that. We give you our best, our best. We just want the best, and if you do your jobs with fidelity and professionalism, then we'll be partners. But really, I want to stress to administration of the new coming year, parents are people too. Don't ignore their student issues. Another issue I'm going to be really looking at is bullying. We've got to stand up. Our students are being bullied, and this zero policy, it's not, it's not being effective. I sit on a lot of boards, bullying. We got to do better when it comes to bullying, not the victim's fault.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Alan Brewster. Good evening, board members, superintendent. I just want to say, I've been coming here a while talking about leadership, responsibilities of the leadership, partnership with the parents, putting the students first. I really believe the student should have a voice. They should have a platform to voice their concerns, the issues that's going on in the schools. A lot of schools, the students can't go to the principal. They can't. The principal doesn't listen. They're not listening. Now, I've said this before, we've been here 10 years, we've been in eight different schools, eight different schools, and all of those eight schools, we've had the same issues. And we come here, my wife and I, to advocate, to be a voice, to speak for those who are afraid to come here, to speak for those who say, we said something and nothing has changed. There's a lot of politics at Gaither, a lot of politics. I've talked to a lot of parents at Gaither, and they say, we voiced our concerns and nothing was done. And I'm saying this for the new principal. Hopefully, he'll be student-centered, parent-centered, innovative, and come up with some robust programs. And I've been an advocate for students having pride in their school. I've advocated for, maybe on a Friday, the students have, they wear their Gaither shirts to show their pride in Gaither, unity. I've advocated for a community cleanup with the school in the community. And if you don't build these things in the school, why would the students want to come and talk to the principal about issues in the building? There are issues there. I've seen students hanging out at Bob Evans. There's, Bob Evans no longer there. They're turning into a veterinarian. They were hanging out there. They're hanging out at McDonald's. If they don't, the school doesn't get out, the administrators don't get out in the community and say, hey, can you let us know if you see this? When I was going to school, you couldn't go to the mall between 8:00 to 4:00. You couldn't go in no business between those hours. You have students all up and down Hillsborough, not all the way, but hanging out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, board.
Good afternoon, board members, superintendent. I'm only here to introduce myself because hopefully I can meet with you individually. My name is Silvio Delgado. I am someone who's been raised in Florida. I grew up in the Hillsborough County. I went to Jesuit High School and had Ms. Gray, Board Member Lynn Gray. It sounds weird calling her Lynn because I called her Ms. Gray as a teacher of mine at Jesuit High School, where I was fortunate enough to be the student body president, so I'm very used to like facing the large crowd and not the small crowd, but obviously I'm gonna face this way. I wanted to say a little bit about myself and congratulate you all, and we'll get to those things later. I graduated from University of Florida. Any Gaithers? Okay. And then I went to be a teacher in Phoenix, Arizona, where I taught dual-language math for several years, speaking in Spanish and English throughout the year. And I was fortunate enough to be in a classroom where we had our motto on the wall, much like you have in this space. And on one of the walls, it said "Impossible is nothing," and on another wall, it says "Si se puede." And my students, believe it or not, when they raised their hands, they wouldn't just do this, they would do this. I'm gonna ask all of us, because now I'm gonna turn around and see if we can do this, to raise both of our hands if we can and we're able. Raise our hands and shake them a little bit. Oh my gosh, there's so many participants. I love it. And the reason why I ask us to do this is because we're so fortunate and blessed to be in a space where we can engage with one another about a beautiful thing that is education. And I was fortunate enough to be a teacher for several years and then a school administrator for another several years. And in that time, I got to engage with families and communities like you all get to do, like all of us get to do. And I had us raise our hands because I believe it is passion that brings us into this space. It is passion that brings individuals into the classroom space. Whether an individual is a chiquillo of five years old or a chiquiyote of much more years, being the teacher in that room, it's passion that brings us into that space. And it is in that spirit that I come and speak with you. I'm fortunate enough to work for a company called iTeach that helps passionate people become teachers. Gives them a pathway, an alternative teacher certification pathway, to get them trained, get them certified, and into classrooms across the state of Florida. And I'm fortunate enough to meet you all and fortunate enough to have been met with other folks in this county to talk about the program that we have as an offering here in this state. And don't worry, emails will come to each of you individually. I wanted you to have a face to the name so that when your email boxes have my name and my email, you know who is reaching out to you and my story. Thank you to each of you in advance for reading that email and for the conversations I hope I get to have with each of you. And thank you in advance to everyone out here for the conversations I might get to have with each of you about the passion that folks get to bring into the classroom. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Karen Armstrong, and I'm gonna be a rising junior in the theater program at Blake High School. And I'm here to voice my frustration that I've had with the administration from the lack of communication and responsibilities that have been going on for the last two years. How am I supposed to succeed when the people in the office say, "Oh, I don't know," if they even allow you to ask a question? From a student's perspective, I was beyond disappointed and frustrated. I didn't have an English teacher for six months. I can't get my accommodations for testic knowledge, and I still get a "I don't know" or teachers berating the students because they need extra help or time. Why am I feeling more responsible than adults that are supposed to be in charge and lead? If tradition means more than respect, accountability, change, and leadership, what are you really teaching or preparing us for? The decisions you make today will affect me, the community, and the future. Let's make a change today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Gianni Hunt, and I'm here again today, not as a concerned citizen, but as a voice for everybody else who is deeply troubled by the ongoing threats to our public education. In previous meetings, I've spoken about protecting access to education. But today, I want to pivot to something just as urgent, the budget. You see, I'm the product of strong public schools. I am someone who's lived the impact of decisions made in rooms similar like this. I came into the school system as a kid whose first language wasn't English. And I'll be honest, it was very overwhelming for me. But what made the difference for me and for my family was the programs and the people who were there to support students like me. The English Language Services, the patient teachers, the after-school programs, the counselors who helped me catch up in more ways than one. Those services didn't just help me learn English, they helped me find my voice. They helped me feel like I belonged, and they helped me succeed, not just in school, but in life. I'm here out of a growing concern for our students and schools in light of the $6.2 billion that is being delayed for K-12 education. Florida alone stands to lose $347 million in federal support across key programs that directly impact our district's classrooms, educators, and our most vulnerable students. Schools are left waiting for critical support with no clear timeline for release of these funds from Congress. So I have three questions I hope this board can address. If the funding delay continues, is there a plan to communicate the potential impact so our community can stay informed and be prepared? If the funding ultimately does not come through, which specific programs are at risk? Could we see a reduction in after-school programs, in literacy programs, mental health services, or support for English learners? And lastly, what specific actions is the school board or superintendent's office taking to advocate for the release of these funds? Please remember why you were elected. Families, schools, and community members deserve to know what's coming, not after the fact, but now, so we can organize, so we can prepare, and so we can protect our communities the best that we can. We can't afford to be caught off guard, and we can't afford to let politics in Washington quietly dismantle the progress here at home. So let's develop clear policies for communication and partnerships, like everybody's advocating for, so we can all be part of the solutions our kids need. I appreciate your time, and I really do appreciate your commitment. We're in this together.
Thank you. Can I have speakers 12 through 16 line up? And next speaker at the podium, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Deanna Wilson, and I am a proud 2019 graduate of Thomas Jefferson High School. I'm here to speak in full support of renaming the auditorium after Ms. Gwendolyn Henderson, a woman who, for so many of us, was the heartbeat of that school. Ms. Henderson taught in the way that actually mattered, by showing up for everyone. For students who were overlooked, for those of us trying to figure it all out, she didn't need a seating chart to claim you as hers. For me, she showed up through the clubs, organizations, and events that made high school feel like more than just tests and transcripts. NAPS, National Technical Honor Society, Mr. and Mrs. Jefferson, even that unforgettable march to see Black Panther at West Shore Mall. We didn't just watch superheroes on a screen that day, we were next to one, Ms. Henderson. I wasn't involved in all of that because of her. And let's be honest, almost every event in that auditorium was made possible because of her. If it was joyful and meaningful, it had her fingerprints all over it. One of the most personal moments with Ms. Henderson for me was the 2019 HAPSE Achievers Ceremony, which myself and dozens of others almost didn't get to attend. You see, some of us were left off the roster mistakenly due to being biracial. But when I told Ms. Henderson, the organizer of the event, she had the roster fixed immediately. Not with the shrug, not with the "maybe next year," but with action, because that's who she was. She didn't just include people, she made space for them. She believed in every student, she celebrated us when no one else did, and she gave us places to lead, to belong, and to be seen. And that auditorium was her stage to make all of that happen. So if you choose to rename it after her, you're not just honoring her legacy, you're passing it on. You're reminding every faculty, staff, administrator, and student who steps into that room what it looks like to leave with love, to act with purpose, and to show up fully, reminding them that the students come first. Ms. Henderson didn't need a spotlight, but she has most definitely earned one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Rachel. I'm a parent of two in your schools. The last meeting, you didn't have a conversation regarding what HCPS parents came here about. Who's shocked? Not me. Don't worry, though, I'll go down to the Florida Board of Education next week and tell them that it's disgusting to ignore parents and to allow our media specialists to be called abusers. You did discuss things I do wanna mention. So first, regarding the peeps program, I wanted to give you some faces to back up your data. It is absolutely true that your peeps program leads to better kindergarten outcomes for your students. Both my kids were peeps kids for years until they aged out. They wouldn't be here where they are academically or emotionally without the peeps program. I am sincerely grateful. I will say, though, that it was easy to get my oldest enrolled with his delays, but y'all made me jump through hoops to get my youngest enrolled, who I'd argue needed peeps even more. We had to plead special circumstances based on his disorders. You need to make it easier on parents and kids who have certain disabilities that the evaluation process does not take into account. But I doubt that'll ever be discussed on the dais since you're so allergic to parent feedback. This is why community processes that involve parents are preferred by parents, because then you can't ignore us. The other thing I wanna mention was, summer programming last year was a disaster. It never got fixed, and I never got an apology. I'm still disgusted by several people in this room for how y'all let the students down last year. But just to let you know, my kid did ESY this summer instead, and that was run much better. The teacher has been helpful, professional, encouraging, communicative. I'm not worried about meeting IEP goals next year, but I know communicating with parents isn't really a priority for certain people in this room, so maybe I'm wasting my breath. Last thing, I want to say thank you to member Washington for moving to name the auditorium after Gwen Henderson. Gwen was a friend. Gwen was a pillar in this community. I don't have to tell anybody in this room that. Gwen watched these meetings. She cheered us parents on. Gwen ran what is arguably the best bookstore in this state. Gwen and I were tentatively planning an event for the fall, and it's very easy to plan an event with Gwen because she knows everybody in this county. She already has a caterer and a venue lined up before you even ask. Gwen loved Hillsborough and bringing this community together. As a parent, I can't think of anyone who deserves part of a school that she did so much for and named after them more. My kids loved Black English, and we loved Gwen, so thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, superintendent, school board members. My name is Carla White-Sunday. I'm a proud graduate of Jefferson High School. I'm currently assistant principal at Feral Girls Preparatory Academy. I've come to ask and plead that you rename the auditorium after Gwen Henderson. I met Gwen 45 years ago, when my dad was the head football coach at Jefferson. Gwen and Ms. Darlene Johnson were somewhat of my babysitters while they were at Chilling practice. So I grew in love for Jefferson early. Mr. Air's mom was back then my dean at Jefferson. So it would be an honor and a privilege. I helped judge, I think, the first or the second Ms. Jefferson, Mr. and Mrs. Jefferson. I know when Mr. Air showed up, it was like he was the rock star at Jefferson High School because they cheered for him. But Ms. Henderson really had a passion for kids. She didn't care where you came from, what you did. She just came to our school at Feral on April, and those girls loved her. They wanted her to come back. She talked with our 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. So it would be an honor to have her name outside Jefferson, renaming her for the auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Julie Gebhards. Starting in May with the Commissioner of Education, then the Attorney General stepping in to address the pornographic books, that's what they called them. Here in Hillsborough County, much has been stirred up. One thing I've noticed since then is that it seems like a lot of people have wanted to talk about transparency. So let's talk about transparency. How about with the processes and the book challenge processes, like everyone's been wanting to know? The library collection management, all of that. But how about the actual content of the library books? How can we be more transparent about that instead of leaving sex instruction manuals on shelves with zero warning on the front? What about content that I've read that's made national news, shocking people all across the nation, but then you left it on your shelves? And images even from a sex scene that's still in libraries and also made national news? Let's talk about those review processes. When librarians are involved, the processes are not working. One book at a time and one library at a time is another big mistake. If a book is deemed pornographic in one library, it doesn't belong in any, as the DOE recently clarified when they saw content from our Hillsborough County libraries. Librarians are choosing the reviewers, and clearly, that's been a biased process and has never once resulted in a removal by any committee. It took seven months to complete one review process for one book in one library. Actually, it was two. Your processes have resulted in, again, a sex instruction manual, including five steps for using a sex hookup app to be left in schools. All the librarians that I've heard come here to speak defend the books, defend the processes, and now they're going to be the ones doing the reviewing? And you expect them to do a good job removing the explicit books now? Superintendent, we're grateful to you that you are... I just can relate with being in such a difficult position. You have passionate voices on all sides of the issues. And I would just like to remind you that Hillsborough County is actually a red county by almost 10% in one of our recent elections. The people have spoken and will stand behind you as you continue in this process, a very difficult process. These books, we know, endanger children as they blur the lines between and send an exceedingly sexual view of the world to children. Parents actually have a constitutional and God-given right to control the moral and religious upbringing of a child. This right is stripped when school librarians expose children to content that directly violates their moral and religious training. Lastly, if it can't be played on the evening news, if the FCC says it's not suitable for the airwaves, if it can't be printed in the newspaper, if it would be rated R or NC-17 as a movie, if your own board member believes it harms children when I read it out loud here, if the superintendent is unwilling to read it to adults at the BOE meeting, and if the content doesn't make it through the porn filter in emails sent to the Board of Education, if Instagram and Facebook censor the content of people sharing school library books on their platforms, and if the Attorney General of Florida is willing to bring the law down on Hillsborough County over the books, then it's pretty obvious the books do not belong in schools.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Clark, and I serve as a product manager for Avid Center. I'd like to take a moment to honor the legacy of Gwen Henderson, an educator, mentor, friend, and community leader whose impact reaches far beyond the classroom. Gwen was my assigned mentor when I entered the district in 2006. Now, we all know how an assigned mentor can be definitely different than an actual mentor. But Gwen quickly became not only one of my first mentors as an educator, but what began as a professional guidance blossomed into a powerful friendship. She also led the Hillsborough Alliance of Black School Educators with grace and determination. Gwen, in her last years at Jefferson, was also an avid coordinator, and I happened to serve as the avid program manager at that time for Hillsborough County Public Schools. A proud Samu rattler, Gwen championed initiatives like the Florida A&amp;M University 813 Day at Jefferson High School, where students all across the district had an opportunity to be exposed to an HBCU. Gwen was a force. She made sure that everybody knew about college and career readiness. She created space for young women through her NAPS Girl Empowerment Conference, a student-led event that powered and empowered students from all backgrounds to participate in their own opportunity to showcase their talents, and not only their talents, but to build connection and network. She helped students, even like my little cousin, wanna think about even pledging Delta Sigma Theta, which I was like, as an AKA, we can't have that! But what I loved about Gwen is that she made sure that she helped everyone to think about entrepreneurship. As a small business owner, she helped me even with my business plans, and she helped me to create goals outside of the realms of education. And she never let her life's challenges as a caretaker derail her from her mission of impacting our community. Gwen pushed for high expectations and always held everyone accountable, that iron sharpening iron. She believed deeply in the power of community and the importance of... She believed deeply in the power of community and the importance of opportunity. Whether as a city councilwoman, a businesswoman, an educator, Gwen made things happen and she made it happen with excellence. So I want to share this. She left me with this quote the last time I spoke to her and it said, "Black history is made fresh daily. Let's make it today by renaming the auditorium at Jefferson High School, the Gwen Henderson Auditorium. Education is the passport to the future, for tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today. Let's prepare students for life by honoring Gwen's legacy." Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can I call up speakers seventeen through twenty? And the next speaker may approach the podium.
Good afternoon. The pillar, the warrior, the trailblazer. Most of all, to me, a queen in her own way who set herself apart from the norms through passion and authenticity. She's more than just a space. You can't contain a giant to a space, but we'll take what you're willing to give. A teacher, not only with the blueprint, but who left her DNA in everybody that you hear. Also, she left a blueprint through her daughter, Ariel Amir Daniel, who hopefully will feel them footsteps and move forward. Thank you all for naming this auditorium, although it's not big enough. You should have named the whole school after her, but thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Bishop Michelle B. Patty. I had the honor and pleasure of working with Gwendolyn Gwen Henderson and her daughter Ariel Danley in securing her seat on City Council representing District 5. It didn't stop there. Her first love was education. Gwen did not know the meaning of no. When she decided to open up her bookstore in a deprived, black neighborhood, folks told her it wouldn't work. So what did Gwen do? She named the bookstore Black English Bookstore that has been recognized now nationally. So, in doing so, we're seeing that this is something, the auditorium should be named after her, in her honor. And as the speaker just said, not just the auditorium. Because I can remember many times at City Council when people came before her who didn't agree with some of the things that she voted on. She'd say, "Let me make this a teaching moment." She was always a teacher. She read, she redid her research. She always made sure that the things that she spoke on, she knew what she was talking about. Not only did she stop there with the bookstore with her and Ariel opening up the bookstore Fair Oaks. Fair Oaks, a $45 million project that people did not want because it sits in the heart of East Tampa. And it was people who looked like us that actually fought against it. But Gwen stood her ground because she would not compromise herself. She didn't go alone to gill alone. She did what was in the best interest of the community. She used to tell me often, "Michelle, I can't wait to see this come to fruition because there are so many things we're going to be able to do over in that place." Pickleball, she didn't play pickleball, but she was excited about it. But she talked about different conferences and she told me that I could even do my Mother's Day program that I do annually there. So Gwen was someone that was always talking about how to better this community. She could have just sat back and said, "I made it. I'm City Council. I'm ready to retire from the school board." But no, she did not. It's unfortunate that her daughter Ariel could not be here this evening. She's out of town, had a former commitment, but she wanted you all to know that she greatly, greatly appreciated if you named this auditorium in her mother's honor. Ariel is running with that torch. Ariel Daniel, Delaney, remember that name because that's the name that is going to pick up that torch and pick up where Gwen left off at. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening Superintendent, School Board members. My name is Henry Washington Jr. I'm here to speak on behalf of my dear friend Gwendolyn Henderson. I met Gwen in the year 2000 when I was working at Jefferson High School. She was Jefferson through and through. If she, that's all she talked about, Jefferson High School. She was a dragon. She was a class of eighty-two, alright? She worked for Jefferson for twenty-five years. She sponsored the Mr. and Mrs. Jefferson in which my daughter won in 2018. She was Mrs. Jefferson. My daughter was also the president of her club NAPS, naturally aware, proud, and strong. And when my daughter became president, I warned her, I said, "Hey, if you're going to be working with Ms. Henderson, you better get it together because Ms. Henderson will get you together real quick." And she learned and she helped my daughter be one of the top students at Jefferson High School. She also created a FAMU event where FAMU comes to Tampa and they recruit. Not just at Jefferson, they recruited all high school students. And that event was a big event all over the news and she was a sponsor of that and she made that goal. Research shows one caring adult can change a kid's life forever. And I know for a fact, she changed many lives at Jefferson High School, thousands, I'm sure, after twenty-five years, alright? I don't know the Bible front and back, but one of my favorite verses in the Bible is Proverbs 27:17. "Iron sharpens iron, so a friend sharpens a friend." And she definitely sharpened me. She made me a better educator. She made me a better person. And I'm just, I'm happy that we are here at this moment to honor her and in honor of her being an educator, now that she is with our ancestors, she definitely understood the assignment.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Members of the Board, Mr. Superintendent, family, alumni of Jefferson High School, and distinguished guests. I am Victor Whaley, a proud graduate of 2019 from Jefferson High School. I rise today not only as a community member, but as someone who has witnessed the transformation power of legacy and the responsibility we all share to honor those who have shaped the very foundation of our schools, neighborhoods, and cities. We are here to consider a proposal that is far more than a name change. It's a chance to etch into the hearts of thee Thomas Jefferson High School, a permanent tribute to a woman whose impact can never be erased, City Councilwoman Gwendolyn Gwen Henderson. Before she was a councilwoman, she was Ms. Henderson, a dedicated teacher in the halls of Thomas Jefferson High School. She didn't just teach lessons from a textbook. She poured herself into the lives of our students, inspiring generations to reach higher, dream bigger, and believe deeper. In the classroom, she wasn't just an educator. She was a mentor, a motivator, a lifeline for so many. And she didn't stop there. Her calling to public service led her to the City Council where she continued her fight for equity, education, and empowerment. But no matter how far her influence extended, she never forgot where she came from or the students whose potential she believed in before they believed in themselves. Renaming the auditorium in her honor is not just symbolic, it's appropriate. It's fitting that the space where voices rise in performance, where students gather in hope, where future are inspired, should hear the name of someone who spent her life doing exactly that. Let this not be a moment of political decision, but a moment of communal gratitude. Let this be a legacy of remembrance and respect. Let every student who walks through the doors and sees the name Gwendolyn Gwen Henderson ask, "Who was she?" And then learn about a woman who taught here, served here, and fought for here, and loved here. I urge this body to vote in favor of this proposal. Let us not miss the opportunity to give honor where honor is due to a woman who gave so much of herself to this school and to this city. May God bless this city, may God bless this county, and may God bless these United States. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I stand before you today not only as a dedicated employee of HCPS, but also as a wife, a mother, and someone who is deeply committed to supporting students, families, and the wider school community every single day. As a parent liaison, my responsibilities go beyond what the title may suggest. I build meaningful relationships with family. I monitor student attendance. I provide critical support for those facing financial hardship. Help operate in the food pantry, collect and manage data, plan school events, and serve as an assistant to our community resource teacher. I am also proud to be actively involved in our community schoolwork, which includes bringing services and programs to the school that helps meet students and families' social, emotional, and economic needs. This kind of wraparound support is essential to helping students thrive and I am honored to be a part of it. I take on each of these roles with pride, compassion, and a deep belief in the power of education and community. But despite everything that I give to my school, I only earn $15 an hour. Their wage does not reflect the level of responsibility, the complexity of work, or the personal investment required to do this job well. The truth is, I often find myself in the same position as many of the families I serve, needing support, resources, and assistance just to get by. It is painfully irony to be the person offering help to others while struggling to provide for my own family. I also want to express how impactful the return-to-work bonuses were last year for prayer professionals who come back after summer and went to break. Those bonuses made a real difference for many of us, offering a financial cushion during unpaid time off. I respectfully ask that the Board keep those bonuses in place moving forward. Lastly, I am requesting your serious consideration of a $5 increase of hourly wage for parent liaisons. This raise will help bring our pay closer to living wage and show that the district values the essential work that we do. Work that is often behind the scenes, but is vital to student success. I love my job, I love my school, and I love the families that I serve. But love alone does not sustain a household or reflect the true worth or the contributions. Fair compensation is not just a financial issue, it is a matter of dignity, respect, and retention. Thank you all for taking the time to listen and I appreciate you guys' continued support and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Kyra Montague-Marks and I am honored to be speaking to the School Board on this matter. I stand before you today as a former student and colleague of Ms. Henderson's who had the opportunity to watch her birth programs like Mr. and Mrs. Jefferson. In 2006, when I sat in Jefferson's auditorium as a junior for the first-ever pageant, I was in awe of the production that was led by Ms. Henderson. As a senior, I learned by taking part in the scholarship program that I can do hard things. And this is a lesson that Ms. Henderson's taught every student that came in contact with over the many years that she gave of herself at JHS and the countless hours spent in the auditorium nurturing each of her students to be the best versions of themselves by any means necessary. And if you know, then you know. As a former colleague, I watched her birth programs like NAPS where she taught every female student to be naturally aware, proud, and strong of who they are and how to embrace the things that make us unique and different. Ms. Henderson had a program at Jefferson that would celebrate every student that walked through the doors of the school. She challenged her students, the staff, and even the parents. And her impact was undeniable. Her strength and love echoed through the aisles and rests on every seat of the auditorium she spent so much time in. She was the definition of what it means to bleed blue and gold. And I can't think of a better way to honor a woman who was unapologetically herself and gave so much to her alma mater. We have a saying at Jefferson, "Once a dragon, always a dragon." And the auditorium is the perfect place for her name to be forever memorialized. A place that she loved, a place that matters, and a place that means so much to every dragon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Superintendent, and School Board. I am the Reverend Dr. Glenn B. Dames Jr., Senior Pastor of the Allen Temple AME Church here in the great metropolis of Tampa. First and foremost, I want to say a special thank you and heartfelt shout-out to Mr. Henry Shake Washington. Your vision and leadership, Mr. Washington, and swift action did not go unnoticed on the very day that we laid Councilwoman Gwendolyn Gwen Henderson to rest. You honored her legacy. You honored it by making the motion to name Jefferson High School Auditorium in her memory. And that kind of foresight and respect speaks volume and for that, sir, we are grateful. With that same spirit of reverence, I join and support with so many other folk. Because Councilwoman Henderson was more than an elected official. She was a beacon of light, a voice for the people, and the tireless advocate for justice, education, and empowerment. A daughter of Tampa soil, she walked with purpose. She spoke with power and she served with deep conviction. You heard Mr. Washington Jr. say he's not an expert on the Bible. Neither am I. I know one or two things about it. But I do know Proverbs says, "Who can find a virtuous woman? For her price is far above rubies." I want you to know that Gwendolyn Gwen Henderson was a virtuous woman. Not just because she loved the Lord, but because she loved God's people. She loved God's children. Didn't matter where they were from or who they belonged to, she saw value in them. And I hope you will see value in her legacy, all of you. Because as Councilman Miranda said, "I can see by all of your smiles" that your decision has already been made and for that, I'm grateful. Because I just know that you're going to do the right thing and name that auditorium in her lovely memory so that students far and near can go through those doors and remember through that auditorium who Councilwoman Gwendolyn Gwen Henderson was and that her memory will serve as a beacon of light for many, for many years to come. Thank you for your time and thank you for your vote. I'm greatly appreciative.
And with that, we end public comment. We are going to move on to the consent agenda. I need a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion by Member Gray and a second by Member Perez. Please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. I will now call on Superintendent Ayers to highlight our administrative appointments.
Alright, thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, we did have some principal appointments on the consent agenda this afternoon. And we'll start, we get the PowerPoint up, get their picture up there. We're going to start with the new principal of Blake High School, Mr. Toby Johnson. And Toby, if you could please come on down. Come on down, Mr. Johnson. So Toby Johnson began his teaching career in Mississippi in 2002. In 2006, he was hired in Hillsborough County as a math teacher at Madison Middle School and an avid coordinator. He was appointed AP at Coleman Middle School in 2009. In 2017, he then transferred to M In 2017, he then transferred to Memorial Middle School. And Mr. Johnson was appointed Principal at Martinez in 2019, where he is currently serving. But as of this afternoon, he is our new principal at Blake High School. Congratulations, Mr. Johnson. Congratulations. Any family and friends in Blake, yellow jackets out there as well? If you also wanna be, stand and be recognized, any yellow jackets here to support? There we go. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we have our new principal of Gaither High School, Mr. Jeremy Klein. Jeremy, come on down, sir. He actually caught us off guard yesterday at the interviews, because he didn't have his bow tie, had a regular tie on, no one knew who he was. They say, "Who is this guy?" So Mr. Klein began his career with Hillsborough County Public Schools in 2004 as a music specialist at Robles Elementary. From 2004 to 2012, he served as band director at Robinson High School. In 2012, he was appointed Assistant Principal at Hillsborough High School. And then Mr. Klein was appointed, and I don't know if many of you know this, but he was appointed Supervisor of Charter Schools in 2014. So he came down, left the schools, came down to the district site, was in the charter school office, lasted a year, I guess. He had to give back to kids, huh? Yeah. So in 2015, he was appointed AP for curriculum and served from 2015 to 2020 at Jefferson and LeToe, and LeToe High Schools. And in 2020, Mr. Klein was appointed Principal of Brandon High School, where he is currently serving. Mr. Jeremy Klein, the new principal of Gaither High School. Hold on, Mr. Klein. Any family and friends from Gaither that are here? Any Gaither family, family of Jeremy? And Mr. Klein, before you do, you know, step out here, I do wanna, on behalf of all of us, just thank you for your, for your time over at Brandon. You've done amazing work at Brandon High School, so thank you for your service at Brandon. Thank you. And Mr. Klein is the new principal of Gaither, because we do have one retiree, and he is actually here today. Mr. Morale, if you could please stand. Just wanna commend Mr. Morale. Thirty-three years of service to Hillsborough County Public Schools, started in 1992 as a teacher of students with specific learning disabilities, taught, oh, at, see, at Robinson, at Sly, Foster, Duran, and Wharton between 92 and 98, was an AP at Brandon High School, AP of Administration at Robinson, AP of Curriculum at Robinson, Principal of Chamberlain, which people forget, Principal of Chamberlain, and then he's been the principal, and then he's been the principal of Gaither since that time. So, Mr. Morale, thirty-three years of Hillsborough County Public School service. We wish you the very best in your retirement, and on that, A at Gaither. Congratulations. All right, next up, we need a new principal of LeToe High School, is Scott here, Scott Haslett? Come on down, Scott. So Scott Haslett began his teaching career in 2007 at Alonzo High School, teaching psychology, American history, and served as an administrative resource teacher there. He was appointed AP in 2014 at Alonzo High School. 2015, he was appointed AP for Administration at Alonzo. And during the 2018-29 school year, I didn't realize this till yesterday, he actually opened an international school in Vietnam where he served as the principal there. Yeah. He came back to Hillsborough County in 2019 as the magnet lead teacher at LeToe High School, and in 2020, Mr. Haslett was appointed AP for curriculum at LeToe High School, where he is currently serving. Scott, congratulations, the new principal of LeToe High School. Where's Ms. Colston? I didn't see her coming in here. There she is. Come on down, Tanya. All right. So, Tanya Colston, who's our new principal of Young Middle Magnet. Tanya began her teaching career in 2000 in the state of Virginia. She relocated to Florida in 2013, where she taught in Hillsborough County at Junta and Buchanan Middle Schools. 2017, she was appointed AP at North Tampa Epic Center. She held that role for three years before transitioning to Middleton High School in 2020, and then to McLean Middle School in 2021 as an Assistant Principal. And Ms. Colston was appointed AP at Collins PK8 in 2023, where she currently serves. Tanya Colston, our new principal at Young Middle Magnet. And Ms. Colston, I know Ms. Sargable's gonna miss ya. There you are, you're back there. She's back there. So now we're moving on to our new principal at PISO, Danielle Flanders. Danielle, if you're out there, come on down. You gonna sneak this way? Come on through. So Danielle Flanders, our new principal at PISO K8. Danielle began her career in Hillsborough County Public Schools as a teacher at Lincoln Elementary in 2012. 2017, she went on to teach at Dunbar, Lincoln, and Kenley Elementary's before serving as Reading and ESOL Resource Teacher at Shore Elementary in 2021. 2022, Danielle was appointed AP at PISO K8, where she currently is serving. So from AP at PISO to the new principal at PISO K8. Congratulations. And one more. Lakisha, where you at? Come on, where'd she go? There she is. Come on down, Lakisha. So Lakisha Bryant, our new principal of Dunbar Elementary School. She began teaching first grade in 2006 in Montgomery County, Maryland. She taught, excuse me, taught there for three years before relocating to Florida. She began her career with Hillsborough County Public Schools in 2009, where she taught fifth grade for four years, and served as a reading resource teacher for two years at Booker T. Washington Elementary School. 2015, Ms. Bryant was appointed AP at USF Patel Elementary, transferred to Lewis Elementary as an AP in 2017. And in 2018, Ms. Bryant was appointed Assistant Principal at River Hills Elementary, where she is currently serving. Lakisha Bryant, our new principal at Dunbar Elementary. Lot of principal appointments, Madam Chair, but those are, those are them. And congratulations, everybody.
All good wins. Congratulations to the new principals. Thank you for your service to all of the principals who are retiring. And we'll now take a pause just for a moment so we can clear the boardroom. For anyone who wants to leave, you can stay if you want to. For anybody who wants to leave, you can stay if you want. I know, sorry, no. For anyone who wants to leave. People looked confused. I just, I just had, I just had a look at the confusion in everybody's face. Okay. We're gonna transition on to our agenda items, and we are gonna have the Jefferson item as the first agenda, so anybody who's waiting for that can stay for that. The, I know. I cleared the room, and now there's no one listening. All right. The following items will now be heard. C 504, which is the Jefferson item. C 103, C 201, C 204, C 402, C 403, C 601, C 602, and C 701. The first one is 504, naming the auditorium at Jefferson High School, and Dr. Rick Gray's Chief of Schools will highlight this item.
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. We received ninety-five letters of support in one week for this naming. Gwen Henderson began her career at HCPS in 1993 as a graduate of Florida A&amp;M University. She was sworn into the Tampa City Council on Monday, on May 1st, 2023, and shortly after was named the Chair of the Community Redevelopment Agency. Councilwoman Henderson served on the City of Tampa Citizens Review Board. She was an active member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. She was a champion for African-American history and was a small business owner of a black English bookstore in historic Tampa Heights. I would like to introduce Dr. Jennifer Kennedy, Principal of Jefferson High School.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair Vaughn, Honorable School Board Members, Superintendent Ayers, and esteemed district staff. I am Jennifer Kennedy, and I am the proud principal of Jefferson High School. I am here today to speak in strong support of the motion to name our school auditorium in honor of Gwendolyn Gwen Henderson. Before I go any further, can I take a moment and please recognize the family and friends and supporters that are here today? Thank you so much. Councilwoman Henderson was not only a proud alumnus of Jefferson High School, class of 1982, but she was also a cornerstone of our school community for over twenty-five years. As a classroom teacher and department head of the Business Magnet Program, she shaped the lives of generations of students with her passion, leadership, and unwavering commitment. Her impact extended far beyond the classroom. She was a visionary behind the Mr. and Mrs. Jefferson Scholarship Program, the Naturally Aware, Proud, and Strong Girls Club, the National Technical Honor Society, and the HBCU Legacy Project initiatives that uplifted students, built confidence, and opened doors to higher education. And many of these transformation events took place right in the Jefferson Auditorium. I had the privilege of working alongside Ms. Henderson at Jefferson from 2013 to 2015. She was a force of nature, passionate, driven, and deeply devoted to every student who walked those halls. A mutual colleague best described the significance of naming the auditorium after her by saying, quote, "Gwen was the center of all things happening in the auditorium. She owned the stage." And that couldn't be more true. Her presence filled that space with purpose and pride. Naming the auditorium, the Gwendolyn Gwen Henderson Auditorium, is not just a tribute, it is a legacy. It will serve as a daily reminder to our students what it means to lead, to serve, and to believe in the power of education and community. This proposal has received enthusiastic support not only from the Jefferson community, but also from Mrs. Henderson's family and friends. Those who knew her best and witnessed firsthand the depth of her dedication and the breadth of her impact. I could think of no more fitting honor, no more perfect reflection of our school's motto, "Once a dragon, always a dragon." Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Board members, I need a motion and a second to approve item 504. I have a motion by Member Washington and a second by Member Combs. We'll take discussion. I don't remember who pulled this item, so we'll just go by the queue. Member Washington?
I'm gonna hold up, I'm gonna try to hold up up here. I said it last board meeting. Every now and then, a angel comes to earth. Every now and then. And you know, we don't notice the angel until the angel have left. And when that angel leaves, they leave a legacy, an outstanding legacy, not only for their job, but for the things that they have done in life as a person. I look at Gwen as, you know, they have a saying at Bob Evans. It says, "Bob Evans treat strangers like friends and friends like family." And that's the same way that Mrs. Henderson, she treated strangers like friends and friends like family. A great person in life, a great person. In three more years, I would have been in this school system for sixty-two years counting going to school here. I have never have ever seen a person have that much an impact as Gwen has had in Hillsborough County Public Schools. And I've seen them all, I've seen them all. And I just want to thank the board for you guys doing it. We're gonna make it happen. How about them Rous? So Aya, I can't say anymore, 'cause she live a life of love, laughter, and a legacy. And may God bless her and her family and her friends. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Washington. Member Combs?
Thank you, Member Washington, and thank you for all the people who came out today, especially, you know, people in the community and her former students. I was really, really touched by what everyone said. I remember meeting Gwen five years ago. You weren't superintendent back there, but we were out there immediately, when I showed up at Jefferson, it was like, that's one of the first people I met. Besides the principal, she was like the first person. And immediately, she started telling me what to do, how to do things, you know? And that's who Gwen was, and that's, really, she had such a strong presence. The last time I saw her was at Jefferson graduation. Of course she would be there. She would never miss there. There she stood there, didn't matter who was there, she was by herself, standing up, just talking about Jefferson. The one thing I remember, her and I bonded a lot, we both took care of our moms, and we talked often about the love of our mothers. And I know that she really took care of her mother, just like she took care of everybody else. We talked a lot about her as a person, but we also didn't talk about, not only was she like doing all of this with the back, she was taking care of her mother at the exact same time, making sure she was a priority. She was such a giver to everyone. I remember every time I saw her, like, we would talk about our moms, or we would talk about things, and she would always straighten me up. It didn't matter what I thought, like, she would put me in my place, whatever she thought, or if she thought I was being mean to the superintendent, she would say, "Don't be mean to Mr. Ayers," you know, 'cause she just, she loved Superintendent Ayers, you know? 'Cause they were both Jefferson dragons together. So, you know, from the FAMU event, I mean, that was the first time I'd been to an event at Jefferson, and since then, I always say, you know, "How could you not go to FAMU?" I mean, it's got the biggest school spirit I've ever seen. That event that I went to Jefferson, I've never experienced anything like that before. And to think, I didn't even know she brought that to the school, and all the other things that she brought. So it's just wonderful to be able to remember her, continue her spirit on. I can see through her students that her spirit's gonna continue living on, because we're gonna remember her, not just through an auditorium, but the way she impacted your life and the way she changed the trajectory of so many lives across this district. So I'm just so glad to honor her and thank her, and I just feel so lucky to have gotten to know such a beautiful person. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to each and every speaker who spoke from their heart and from actual experience with Gwen Henderson. I taught at Jefferson, "Once a dragon, always a dragon." And I have to say, the remarks that were made were profound and impactful. For an example, the one phrase was "Made space for all children." And all children, because of her greatness and her leadership and her love of education, were definitely, they moved up not only one step, but much more than that as a human being. She touched so many lives and is an emblematic role model for thousands of students. So I look at the audience who I know have had many interactions with Gwen Henderson, and the students, I know everyone will miss her, and so we miss you, Gwen Henderson, very, very much. So thank you, and thank you Shake Washington for bringing this up, and Nadia Combs as well, so we could vote properly for the dedication of the auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Board, Member Washington, I'm gonna co-sign on your comment. There's a scripture, Hebrews 13:2, that states, "Do not forget how to show hospitality to strangers, for by doing so some people have shown hospitality to angels without knowing it." And for me, I feel Gwen did this. She showed hospitality to angels as she went through her life without knowing it, because she was hospitable to everyone she met. She changed lives by putting her community first. And thank you, thank you, community, for coming out and for supporting this item tonight. And I'm with all of you tonight who feel that Gwen Henderson is beyond deserving of dishonor. And thank you, Board Member Washington, for bringing this item forward for us.
Thank you, Member Perez.
You know, usually, naming schools or auditoriums feels kind of like a contentious process because, you know, there's a lot of people who want things named after them. So, although it's an incredibly sad time to have to do this because we've lost Gwen, the fact that it's brought the community together, that so many people could come together and speak about her love of education, her boldness. When I think of Gwen Henderson, I always think of her smile that was just so big, her enormous sense of humor, her laugh, she was always so warm. And just the fact that she wasn't afraid to be who she was or say what she thinks, and I admire that. It takes a lot of courage to do that as an elected official, to kind of stand your ground and do what you think is right, even when it's unpopular. And I think there's no greater testament than the people who came here to speak so lovingly about her, students, community members, fellow colleagues, you know? And I don't think that there's more that you can do when you lose someone other than to honor them by continuing to speak about the impact they had on your lives and their legacy, and by hopefully being fortunate enough to name an auditorium after her in a place that she had such a huge impact on. I mean, so many people have come and spoke about that. So, you know, I think they said that it was clear by our body language this is gonna pass. I'm thinking it might as well, but it's an honor to be a part of this and to be able to pay tribute to her. I would also just love to mention her love of literacy and the fact that, again, I'm glad someone spoke about the bookstore she opened and the name, and that just speaks to everything who she is. So, it's an honor to be able to do this. Thank you to everyone who come and spoke about her. Thank you to Member Washington as well. And I just look forward, you know, to be able to walk through the doors if this passes and see her name on it. So, thank you. Member Runden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are very few times in your life where you see somebody truly walk their walk. And even the morning of Gwen's death, Member Gray and I had the privilege of working with her that morning and working with youth that were coming from our schools and working in our community within our city of Tampa Bay. And she spoke that. She was taking an intern into her office. She was still working with adults, still being that teacher, still working for Hillsborough County Public Schools, still being a government official, and still running her bookstore and part of her community. There are not many people that can hold every single hat and do it so well. And she held every single hat and did it so well. And she was respectful, she was courteous. You knew where she stood, but she also was respectful of where you stood and was open to hear you. And I think that takes quite a bit of courage and strength as you walk through life to be open, to not only be able to speak your truth, but to hear others' truth. And she truly did that in her walk. So, it is an honor to be part of this. It's an honor to honor someone that has dedicated their life to education, whether it was in the classroom or in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Runden. Dr. Hahn?
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. So, such beautiful words spoken about Gwen today with such warmth. And I'm so glad that we're going to have the opportunity to honor her legacy this evening. I want to thank Member Washington for spearheading the naming of the auditorium and doing it so swiftly. And I'm sure we'll all keep Gwen's memory and everything she has done for our community, both in education and outside of education, at the forefront and in our hearts. She served long before she was in public office, and that's a true testament to the type of woman she was. And that's rare, you know? We don't come across people like that every day, as Member Washington beautifully shared with us and reminded us of. So, I just want to say to the family and friends, I hope your memories provide you with a lot of comfort as you move through your grief. And I certainly know that Gwen is with the Lord, and I know that she's resting in peace. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hahn. Superintendent Ayers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gwen and I have a long history together and, you know, had the honor to speak at her service. And when you hear some of the speakers that come up and speak, you know, they talk about her long tradition tied to Jefferson. A lot of people don't realize, I'm gonna say some things today that people may not know about Gwen. What people know about Gwen is her mom Florence, who worked as a student nutrition, worked in the cafeteria at Jefferson for years and years. My mom at the time was a dean, as mentioned by Carla, was a dean at the time. And I can't tell you how much the person Gwen is, is because of her mom. Her mom was so deeply loved at Jefferson. That love at Jefferson started with Gwen's mom, which is just such a special person. And for me to be principal at Jefferson and work alongside, because that's what we all did, I know Mr. Quinn is there and Ms. Kennedy now, we worked alongside Gwen, right? For sure. But I wanted to maybe, I'm thinking of a story as some of the speakers were speaking today of something that, again, that most people may not know, is one of the speakers today talked about, if you heard her, talked about the field trip, Black Panther, that was at West Shore Mall. I don't even know if that theater's even open anymore. Is it still there? Is it? Okay, good. But talked about the field trip to see Black Panther. Well, that field trip in 2019 was a walking field trip, okay? And it was a tradition of a walking field trip. But that tradition started in 2014, when I was principal there. So, I remember the day. It was Gwen, and what she wanted was, as part of Black History Month, to, the movie Selma had just come out in 2014, and it had just come out. And what she wanted, she wanted to take a field trip for students that signed up as part of Black History Month to go over and see the movie Selma. We had over, and I was a year and a half into principal, we had over 600 students that had signed up to take the bus, to take the bus from Jefferson over to West Shore Mall, right? Because it's the streets that are there, I mean, there's a lot of traffic along West Shore. It's actually a longer walk than you might think to get over to Jefferson. So, she had planned this, and when Gwen was passionate, she was passionate. We were, this was something we were gonna do, and I wasn't gonna argue with her, right? So, this was something that we were gonna do. So, we had planned it, planned it. I remember, and Larissa, I see you back there as well, and Mr. Quinn, the principal, was my APC at the time. It was something we had planned we were gonna do. Well, the night before, we get a call, there's no buses. Who buses? So, I'm like, okay, canceled. We're not going. Gwen set it all up between, I think we got the call around 2 o'clock that afternoon to that next morning. That next morning started a tradition, because Gwen was not gonna be denied. We had 650 students that walked from Jefferson High School, walked from Jefferson High, all because of Gwen Henderson. And I remember, I get there that morning, she's gonna do it, I'm like, thinking, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, someone's gonna, we're crossing the street, so I'm gonna get in trouble for this. And so, I don't think I even told anybody. I think we just, we just went. Those are one of those, you didn't ask for permission, we're just gonna take this field trip, we're gonna walk. Well, Gwen had set up, we had TPD, we had like three or four officers that were there. I don't know how she set it all up. We had officers at every intersection, and those students in 2014 walked, 650 students from Jefferson High School, walked and left Jefferson High School and walked all the way to West Shore Mall, crossed, I mean, it felt like a million intersections, traffic. And it was one of the best days of my principalship there. And to know, I just wanted to tell that story because that was Gwen. She wasn't gonna be denied. We were going on that field trip, one way or the other. And that started in 2014 with Selma, because I, you know, I called Mr. Quinn up to ask him. But that tradition began in 2014, and then years after that, every year, it became this walking field trip tradition that I wanted everyone to know how that tradition began. It began because there were no buses, and Gwen was not gonna be denied. And we were gonna take those kids, and we were gonna walk from Jefferson all the way over. And for years after that, it was the movie Red Tails, Race, Hidden Figures, and Black Panther, for year after year, was a tradition at Jefferson High School during Black History Month. We were gonna take a walking field trip, and we were gonna go. But the history behind that was that Gwen Henderson was not gonna be denied, and we were gonna take that field trip. She did everything for kids. I miss her dearly every day. She was a true, true friend of mine. And I'm, thank you, Mr. Washington, the entire board. This is something that'll live forever, because she was a dragon. I mean, we all love our high schools and where we work. I can tell you right now, nobody, not a one of us, loved their school as much as Gwen Henderson loved Jefferson High School in the blue and gold. And I just glad we were able to do this today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Seeing that there's no further discussion, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. All right, I hope to see you all there, right? Next time, we'll see everyone there with her name on the doors. Thank you, fellow board members. All right, now we're gonna move on to agenda item 103, Hillsborough County Public Schools' Agreement with Houston Millen Hard Court, Red, 180. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Hillsborough Schools will use the Read 180 program with 6,509th and 10th graders enrolled in reading classes at 15 of our high schools to support their foundational skills and comprehension needs to accelerate their progress and performance. Read 180 includes personalized learning paths, adaptive software, high-interest literature, and direct instruction to boost reading skills, and is an evidence-based program and is used in many large districts across the state of Florida. I do want to note that what's interesting in this contract, this is a performance-based outcome contract, which is dependent on student performance, with half of the cost based on assessment measures, and the other half, the purchasing of the program resources and support. So, we do have, of course, Mr. Brady is here, Ms. Bergman, as you know, and also Kristy Rayburn here, all from Academic Services, if you have any questions on Read 180 and implementation at our high schools. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve C-103. I have a motion by Dr. Hahn and a second by Member Runden. Member Gray and Member Combs pulled this item. Member Gray, do you have some questions or comments?
This button's here. Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank also Ms. Rayburn, Ms. Bergman, and your team. It's so important, and we're reminded of what the effects of COVID were to our readers, and we're reminded also that a lot of those grade levels, they've gotten to high school but with unfortunately a low literacy rate. Astoundingly true, but real. So, what do we do? We have 29 high schools looking at a program to raise the literacy level. I think that this is such a critical and a great way of mitigating what could be many graduates graduating with not the reading ability and the success. I don't have but one question, but I want to say thank you. And I also, and Superintendent Van Ayers, I do like, the contract was based on performance. I wish we could get more contracts like this. So, you know, that in itself, I had to verbalize. And, you know, all this is to say, this program, great teachers, great administrators, supervisors, I mean, we're, and I know this is gonna be mentioned later, but one point from an A district, comes from hard work from you all, that you're just pushing forward. So, my only question is, when we have new programs, with this particular one, are there PDs offered professional development opportunities?
Yes, ma'am. So, we actually have, we set up the training schedule already, and we start on July 23rd with our site administrators for our beta program. And then, we incorporate our teachers on the 23rd, or in the 24th, and then we have an entire day set up for PSD with our Read 180 program and our teachers that are participating. And then, we have makeup sessions, and then we also have our coaches incorporated into that training. So, we have a very robust training program that's incorporated into the contract.
Yeah, and the correlation of just very thorough PD along with coaches should make this program very successful. So, we look forward to those rates, those literacy rates being raised, and I thank you for your work. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Combs?
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. I also wanted to, I don't want to reiterate everything that Member Gray said, but, you know, it's great to have an outcomes base, and I think if you look at the research, you know, there's hundreds of research studies in it, and this is rated very strong. And I think this is kind of just shows you, I appreciate, you know, how we're moving to really fundamental phonics, going back to really implicit instruction for our students, and to make sure that when we see that there's gaps and that we're laser-focused on those schools, I think it's great. I had one question. Are we going to be able to possibly bring these into the success centers? Is that a possibility?
So, we're currently working with Mr. Wood in terms of the success centers and what would work best for them. One thing about Read 180 is that it does require longevity in the program. So, it kind of, right now, it depends on where the students came from, where they went, et cetera, et cetera. But as far as that, we are going to investigate it in the future, as well as looking at some other developmentally appropriate programs, because we do know that there is a foundational skills issue, and a lot of those students end up in the success centers because of a reading, yeah, a reading issue that dates way back to elementary school. So, definitely gonna continue to work on it, potentially looking at this program, if not this one, then something else to support Mr. Wood and his schools.
Okay, that's great, because I know Mr. Woods is working so hard, but when you do a walkthrough, when I did the walkthrough the one time, I think I said, mentioned it a couple of months ago, it was like 99% of those students were Level 1 in the success centers. And there's obviously a very direct correlation with not being able to read, and then behaviors and discipline and things of that nature. So, I want to say thank you for that. I know it's very, it's very independent with age-appropriate texts. I also want to thank both of you, because, you know, when I planned my meeting, I mean, here I was like, oh, we'll meet on this day, and I talked to Tracy Bergman, and she's like in Austin, Texas, at a conference outside. And then Christina Rayburn is in Spain, you know, and gets on, gets on a Zoom with me. So, it just shows you the type of commitment that we have from our, from Academic Services, and I thank you both, because I would have never, ever planned that meeting if I knew you were traveling. But thank you for your time and your commitment, even, no matter, even if you're overseas, to meet with me and go over this agenda item. I think this is really exciting. It really is going back to those foundational skills that we talk about. That's what students really need, no matter what grade level, even you have students in high school who are still reading at a second, third grade level, we have to move those students, and I appreciate the laser focus on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. Dr. Hahn?
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. I just want to say, I like that this is limited, that it's a trial, so we can see, you know, how it does with our students, is it effective? I also really like the buy-in from principals. They had to volunteer for this, they're already, you know, bought into it. That makes it so much easier to implement, and we know when people are buying into something like this, whether it's a reading program, or math program, or, you know, behavioral program, the outcomes are so much more, you know, they're better, yeah, better outcomes, more successful. And so, you know, I'm excited to see the data. I know, I also like that it's performance-based. We also, we have a few other performance-based contracts out there. So, I'm glad we're continuing to move in that direction with this one. And, yeah, so, you know, I look forward to hearing more about it once it's implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hahn. You must have done those Zooms back-to-back, huh? Because they were both at the airport when I did them as well, so. But I appreciate my fellow board members' questions around that. Member Gray, I always love finding out about, you know, how we're, if we're gonna offer professional development on that and training, what that looks like. Did you say you scheduled it before we passed the agenda item?
We were just anticipating.
Oh, okay, okay, good. I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure. And also, I agree, thank you, Member Combs, for always advocating for our success centers. I know we have Ingenuity coming up, and we'll talk about that one, to be a supplement for actually having trained and certified teachers in those classrooms. But I love that you're thinking about that, and that hopefully this will have the impact that we're hoping for. My question is actually around, if it is successful, the commitment to funding it, because I'm looking and having principals contact me about Math iXL, which I've asked about, which is a program we offered, and they found to be successful, and are then taking back and asking for them to pay for it themselves, and they're not having access to that if they can't afford it. So, my concern is, this is great, but what happens is, if this is successful, are we gonna continue to offer funding for this? Because I don't want to continue giving our staff members things that help them or that they see as tools, and then pulling that back and expecting for them to pay for it. or that they see as tools and then pulling that back and expecting for them to pay for it.
So currently, this particular item is coming out of the reading allocation, which we do get each year to fund the programs, and it gets written into the CERT plan, which will be coming to you guys this coming, this coming years, it's coming to you at the next board meeting, so stay tuned. And so with that, one of the things that we're also looking at, not only do we have the CERT funds, but if we do conduct our adoption for instructional materials, and this item is selected following our district's adoption policy, it's voted on by teachers, public hearing, et cetera, then it is also possible to blend the funds with the instructional material funds as well as the CERT funds to continue funding it. So that's why we do get the reading allocation, is to ensure that, you know, the state sees literacy as a priority, the district sees literacy as a priority. And so because of that, we do tend to have the funding allocation that some of the other content areas don't because of the CERT plan.
So that's a yes?
That's a yes.
Okay.
It's a long answer to a yes.
I appreciate it, because I had forgotten about the possible adoption and the precursor to that. So I appreciate you reminding me of that. All right, that's all the questions that I have. Seeing that there's no further questions or comments, please vote when your light appear. And the motion passes unanimously. The next item is 201, Agreement for Purchase of Industry Certification Practice and Testing Licenses from CertiPoint. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this agreement allows our school sites to make bulk purchases of industry certification practice and testing licenses from CertiPort for a wide variety of industry certifications, such as Adobe Creative Cloud Suite, Entrepreneurship and Small Business, IT Specialists, Project Management Institute, and more. In addition to these bulk purchases, schools will be to, will be able to make individual license purchases as needed. So that is Item 201. I know there's Mr. Brooks and Mr. Jargo are here as well. Any questions around industry certs, number of them, what this particular item, you know, any questions around this 201, around industry cert certification?
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve C 201. I have a motion by Member Perez and a second by Member Runden. I pulled this item. And I just wanted to ask you, you know, we've had months and months and months of public comment where there've been employees coming to speak about concerns around industry certifications, talking about whether there's equity within the process that we've set up. And I want to understand how, if there's been any changes or how this impacts that, and if there's any truth to some of the concerns that we've been hearing from our employees around industry certifications.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Ayers. So we know, we've had feedback throughout the year from employees. Some of them came to you guys, and then some have reached out to us, questioning sometimes the processes. Quite frankly, several years ago, there wasn't a lot of accountability with industry certs. It was kind of the Wild West. And so every year is the state kind of reins in and creates more rules and stuff. Then we go and we implement those and we see how they work. And so during this year, we went back and Mr. Jargo and his team analyzed our process. We met with our teachers, we talked, and we said, okay, let's look, can we, are there things we can change? Are there things we can do easy? We've had two different audits from the state, DOE. They've came in and audited our industry certs two different times, went through our entire process. We had no findings, everything went through. Matter of fact, the auditors last year asked Mr. Jargo to come speak at the state conference for other CTE directors to be able to train them on industry certs and how we manage our process and how we do those things. So with all that being said, we still decided there's possibly some changes we can do. So with this board item, one of the things that we used to do was we purchased a big district license. We bought all of them as a district. And we bought them, and then we were able to negotiate a very good price. And so one of the things that, with that, it's a little bit slow, it's a little bit cumbersome, it takes a while. So one of the complaints was that we weren't fast enough. They wanted the certs earlier in the year, September, and some of the other times. So now with our new item, we're switching the model to where the schools can purchase them individually. So they're able to buy an individual license. So two things, that will speed up the process for them. And then number two, the price points will be better for some of our larger schools. So our schools like a Tampa Bay Tech and Middleton, some of them who do extremely large volume, some of the price breaks will help them out, and they will be able to save a few dollars when they create that thing. When they, sorry, when they create that, the purchase. The other thing that we did was, we had some paperwork that the teachers would send in to us. They would fill out when they had tested, the practice test, some of those types of information. They would send it in to us, and then we would buy the items. What we're going to do now is go in and allow them to buy the items. And we're also going to allow them to keep those practice, I mean, the, keep that paperwork themselves at the school site. So there's not the cumbersome emailing and sending back and forth to us. So this should, you know, speed up the process for the teachers. This should give them an opportunity to buy the exact number of vouchers that they need. And if they run out, instead of having to call us, you know, and get us or get our supervisor to buy more, they have the ability to purchase more directly from CertiPort. And so I think this will make the process a little bit smoother. We'll still be able to maintain our accounting and be able to oversee things and make sure that we're in compliance with all the statutes and everything that's going on moving forward. One of the things we did was, Mr. Jargo had several focus groups with teachers throughout this past year to just ask some other things, to get feedback. He also met with our department heads. We had some open days where any teacher could come in and talk. And then he met with APCs and principals. And so as they met with these focus groups, they've kind of tweaked it. And then again, we'll do some trainings this summer with all our teachers, see how it goes, and then see if we need to make any other modifications moving forward or if this is maybe a little bit more palatable to some of the teachers.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Member Runden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really want to take the time to really thank both of you for all of your hard work and working with our CTE programs, Mr. Murillo and everyone down from that. You played a large part in a lot of the knowledge and the documentation that went to our state legislators to really understand what that add-on and that funding meant in the FEFP. And that you were one of the ways in which our district is doing it right. The way in which we're spending the money that we are getting is that add-on, how we are then justify it, how we are showing them how that money is being spent, and how it's directly going directly to our students and those certification programs. And so I really want to make sure that we publicly take time to thank you all for that, because you were a large part of the reason why we were able to maintain that funding through our FEFP because of that. And so thank you so very much for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Member Runden. Member Combs?
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. I also wanted to say a thank you as well, Mr. Brooks and Mr. Jargo and your entire team. I mean, there's no question about it, with AI and everything changing, just, you know, the last couple of days, I was looking at, the most recent data showed that 62.8% of the students go to college, only 62%. And of that, only 60% of students complete in the first six years. So that's showing you, these gaps are huge, and they're going to even get larger. With AI coming, there's going to be a lot of jobs that are going to change. And I think we're seeing the need for technical vocational programs. I appreciate all the work that we're doing, all the partnerships with Career Source, with Future Career Academy, all the programs that we're doing. We're seeing that. I noticed that even at graduation, several of the principals talked about career and technical and vocational programs. So I think it's really important, we're front and center, we're ahead of everyone. I think in the nation, because of your leadership, and I want to thank you also, Mr. Murillo, all of you as a team, it really is the future. I think about students sitting there at graduation, not knowing what they're going to do. And a lot of them may go to college, and then they come back and they don't finish, to know, to be exposed to those programs, to know about the programs. And for Hillsborough County to be front and center gives a lot of students hope. And also to make sure that we keep pushing all of our adult programs. We have so many great programs from Erwin and, you know, Bauer, all those programs that we have, not Bowers, but, you know, the Erwin program, all the technical vocational programs. I think we need to continue marketing those and continue expanding those, because that really is the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. Member Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And also, I want to thank you guys for doing a great job, because I go back a long ways, and I remember how it used to be. You know how it used to be. It was really difficult. And to me, the most important part about the things that you do is success of students. If you didn't have your program, it'd be less students successful, because everybody's not going to college. I mean, that's a given. And you're giving them another outlet in life to be successful. And I want you to continue doing that great job that you are doing. If we got to put in more programs, whatever we need. The end product is having students to be successful in life, and I appreciate all that you have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Washington. Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board comments, just stirred something, a question, and maybe a recommendation. So when we start slicing in, more work here, the AI equation, I'm just wondering if now, when we have items such as in your industry certification, there has to be also a sidebar, how AI is affecting the teaching and learning. What do you think about that comment? And that, you know, that kind of conversation, as we pull agenda items, should, I mean, that's a relevant situation. Just share your thoughts on that.
Yes, ma'am. It's kind of interesting, because as you're, we were talking earlier, we were texting, because we have some teachers that are now teaching that. And we're, you know, we're working with some of our high-end computer science teachers, and they're teaching AI, and actually, the IT department was sending some emails, making sure what they were doing were okay, and we were trying to figure out just how to navigate it for some of our programs at Erwin. And so it's extremely relevant, it's the wave of the future. And I think we've, you know, we're carefully moving forward, making sure that we're teaching kids, we're learning kids, they're using that as a positive learning tool. You know, the kids are really comfortable. You know, I have two young boys, and they use it all day, every day, for everything. And it's, you know, it's very different. And I'm kind of an old-timer now, I think. And so I'm having to learn how to use those things. But yes, it's extremely powerful teaching tool.
Yeah, I also want to say, since you've been given so many accolades, well-deserved. But aren't we the top certification district? You have 4,000 certifications. Can you brag on that? I believe, Chris, you want to share? Mr. Jargo?
We certainly have been the top in certain years. I'm not sure if the very last year we were the top, but I can tell you that our FTE funding that came in was over $14 million. And, you know, 15 years ago, when certifications began, we would earn 12 a year, 20 a year. We celebrated when we got to 100. And most recently, you know, a couple of years ago, we were over 20,000 certifications. And we look to see that trend continuing, which of course also equates to funding and success for our students, more importantly.
Well, you two are just gems, and thank you for your work. We appreciate it. Thank you. Madam Chair, done.
Thank you, Member Gray. Seeing no further discussion, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. I'm going to go ahead and go to employee comment. I know we have one person signed up to speak. So employee comment will now take employee and student input. Even though we hear public comment at the beginning of the meeting, it's somehow, sometimes difficult for employees and students of our district to attend meetings at 4:00 PM. There are many ways for employees and students to make their voices heard, including through union representatives, emails, phone calls, one-to-one conversations, and public comment at the beginning of the meeting. But our board wants to hear from you. With this section of our agenda, we're creating another avenue for employees and students to speak to the board. We're setting aside 30 minutes for employees of a district to speak to the board about any issues on your mind, or students. This is not intended to be a discussion about specific agenda items on tonight's agenda, but rather an opportunity to speak to the board about any issues related to your job in the district. Each speaker will have three minutes, and I think there's only one, so I'll call up the first speaker. Welcome.
Thank you. I guess this will be brief. Good afternoon, members of the board and Superintendent Ayers. My name's David Wagner, and I teach at Alonzo High School Orchestra and Choir. Alonzo High School, that being the best high school in Hillsborough County. Heidi's not here to say it, so I'd better. I'm here this afternoon, actually, to thank you all for the salary increases and the cost of living adjustments that you've given Hillsborough's teachers over the last three years and for the meaningful difference that that has made for me as well as many of my colleagues. When I arrived in Tampa in 2022, Hillsborough County's teachers were being paid two steps lower on the salary schedule than their years of experience due to the COVID pandemic budget cuts, which had not been rectified at that time. That information, curiously, was not shared then with prospective or new hires. So I began teaching in Hillsborough County, two steps lower on the salary schedule, and had been advertised for my position. I was not happy about that. And along with HCTA and my fellow teachers, we lobbied you to make it right and to make us whole. Negotiations followed, and the two missing steps were subsequently restored with back pay for that year, I think. At the end of '22 to '23, I had fallen in love with teaching at Alonzo, and I bought a home in the area and made plans to stay indefinitely. The mid-year salary correction and back pay that year was a big part of why I was able to do so. My principal at the time was concerned that since I bought a condo just over the county line at DePennellas that I might leave and go teach there. But no, I had no plans to leave Alonzo at that time, and I still had no plans to leave. It's a great place to work. For '23 to '24, salary negotiations were held and finalized a little bit earlier in that year, including back pay to the beginning of that year, once salaries were agreed on. That was a really pleasant and welcome surprise. And then last year, salary negotiations were completed before the start of school. Even more importantly, though, you all worked with HCTA to support and pass the Teacher Salary Milage Referendum, which will bring Hillsborough County school staff salaries in line with surrounding districts for at least the next four years. Due to the upcoming milage supplement, for the first time in my 10-year public school teaching career, I will make $60,000 this coming year, and that will make a big difference for me. Over my three years at Alonzo, my choir and orchestra students have begun earning top ratings at county and state-level music performance assessments. More and more of my choir and orchestra students have earned placement in the Hillsborough County and Florida All-State Choirs and orchestras. And more of my students are getting involved in community youth orchestras and summer camps as well for music. I say this not to blow my own horn or to brag about my own students, though they are pretty great, but to highlight that it really is good for students and schools when you pay your teachers a living wage, when you pay your staff salaries that are competitive enough to attract and retain good people and make it possible for them to stay in an area that has the kind of inflation that we do. That has all made a difference for me, being able to buy a home and being able to stay here. So I'm grateful for the work you've done to address those things over the last few years, and I hope and ask that you continue to do so. It makes a difference for your staff, your schools, and ultimately for the students who entrust their education to you and all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we will now move on to 204, Increase in Expenditures for Ingenuity-Enhanced Digital Curriculum, Grades 6 through 12. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll be brief with this introduction. As board members, you're all aware and familiar with Ingenuity. So this Ingenuity coursework will be utilized by students throughout HCPS and middle schools, K-8 high schools, adult ed, our ESC Career Centers, and our DJJ sites for course recovery for grade enhancement. Their course feature rigorous, their course features rigorous explicit instruction led by expert on-screen teachers and allow district teachers to incorporate, excuse me, other uniqueness into their course. Ingenuity also includes instructional tools for students with disabilities and English language learners. And that is Item 204. And I see, I know Deanie Upshaw is here from our virtual team. And then, of course, Kristi Rayburn, once again, if you have any questions around Ingenuity 204.
Thank you very much. I need a motion and a second to approve Item C 204. I have a motion by Member Washington and a second by Member Combs. I pulled this item. And my question, I kind of led to it in the previous conversations. I'm glad that we have this. I know a lot of kids use it for credit recovery. I think it's a great tool, right? What my concern is, is that we use it in places. Bowers-Witley was one that was mentioned, our success centers, as an alternative to having certified teachers in front of our kids who need it the most. So I know we talked about it last time. I know we talked about last year, having more unit allocations for our success centers to make sure that our kids have actual instructors in front of them, to be able to ask them questions, to be able to get instruction. Where are we with that when it comes to our success centers and using Ingenuity?
So with the, this is success centers, as the conversations from last year, those allocations were at it. So right now, we're just in the process, like any other schools, where there's some vacancies around hiring the highly qualified teachers in front of our students. For an example, I had a conversation with the Brandon Success Center principal, and she actually hired a reading teacher this past week. Now, we're in the process of HR. The promising thing is, we're going through the same process as any other school. But to your point, Chair Vaughn, nothing changes what a high-quality teacher can do in front of students. There is no program that can do that work. But at the same time, this program provides those supports and actually supplements for what the teachers can also do in different areas of our scope.
Okay, so I appreciate that feedback and finding out that information. I guess this might be a question for Dr. Patton. In those situations where the unit's been allocated, but we're not able to fill that, is there a substitute, a long-term substitute that goes into those positions in that case? Maybe you can use Mr. Lewis's.
Yes, we do provide that if it's requested. But to Mr. Murillo's point, one of the things we do when we look at recruitment is we have action plans, and we work directly with the principals. We have partners that are allocated to them specifically to say, what are your needs? What's allocated? So we can make sure that we first focus on filling it with a full-time person before we go to a substitute. And that's why he was saying in this instance here, And that's why he was saying in this instance here, we recently hired a reading teacher because that's our primary focus always first, is to hire a permanent teacher versus going directly to a substitute. But if we need one, we do have that allocated.
I appreciate that. Obviously, yes, for, of course, we want to have certified people. I just want to make sure that if we don't, it's not a situation where we just sit our kids on the computer program without any adult supervision or assistance in those cases. And so you're saying that that's by request?
That's correct, just as it is for any positions. If they want to have a substitute, they would make the request and it would happen. But yes, that is something we focus on, making sure that it's available if there's a need for it. But our primary focus is a permanent teacher.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And I just have another question. Do we have any idea, like, a number of kids that are able to graduate and, and make up the credits that they're missing or how impactful this really is on our district? Do we have numbers and statistics for that?
Yes, ma'am. In 20, in the 22, 23 graduation class, we had 3,360 students who actually walked across the stage because they completed one or more credit recovery classes with Hillsborough Virtual. In 23, 24, we had 3,945 students who walked across the stage because they were able to complete a credit recovery course with us.
So does this, when, when students access Ingenuity, does that mean they're actually accessing our virtual program, Hillsborough County's virtual program?
It's, it's the, the content is in the Ingenuity platform. We have our credit recovery labs at each of the high schools where the students spend part of their day. And there, we have teachers that then rotate through the schools to support them, the academic teacher of record. So each subject area is assigned to four different schools. So they will, we'll have an English teacher on Monday, a math teacher on Tuesday, a science teacher on Wednesday, and a social studies teacher on Thursday. And then they rotate through Friday to make sure they have that academic support. But that's where they're, they're in the content, in that credit recovery lab with the support of our teachers.
And you mean virtually, right, through virtual?
Correct.
And do we get funding for that?
Yes.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think what my biggest question is, is as we look at this, because we have different environments, right? Not every environment that's using Ingenuity is all the same. We've got some of alternative, we've got some at our schools, we've got some at our PACE program, some of our outside programs. So we have students in all different environments. And while it's important to have a certified teacher in front of them, 100% agree with that, but the program isn't set up to do that, right? The, the program is set up for they can do it on their own. And so where is our reassurance that what we are instructing our schools, our administrators, or every environment that students are getting this curriculum in order to do what they need to do, for whatever reason? Some is credit recovery, some of it is just their basic school life. I mean, if we look at PACE for Girls, that is what they're doing for their school academics, period. And so with that being said, with that being said, what is our instruction to the leaders of those different environments to making sure that it's not just a computer-based program without that instruction being fed in? That's, that's kind of where I, I think we really want to make sure that it's not just a computer put in front of someone, but there's actually more interaction than what is required.
Yes, so when we utilize Ingenuity at, at the high school level, we do have training that takes place for the teachers so that they know what the expectations are as far as monitoring students, progress monitoring. And then Ms. Upshaw can speak to the, the actual content teachers that they hire to do the rotations, the training that they receive and what the expectations are for them, because we don't really handle that side of the house. But they do get training in what the expectations are, not only for the students, but to progress through the course, but how to monitor their progress through that course as well, so that we do make sure that students are, or the program itself is implemented with fidelity and is consistent as possible from site to site.
And Ms. Rendon, just to add, also on the adult education side, we go through the same process around the amount of students that outside of the school and also the ones that are inside of the school with our graduation advancement program.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Rendon. I, I'm confused. PACE offers classes. I've been in there and met the teachers. Are they on Ingenuity or does PACE have classrooms where there are teachers giving instructions? Or is it blended?
I think PACE does a blended model, just like we do in Hillsborough. So they have teachers in classrooms and then students that might need credit recovery or other options. Then Ingenuity is used as a blended model.
Okay, okay, thank you. I was, I was, okay. The other question that I have is, is there a way? Because I, I love those stats. Thank you for helping us understand how many kids are able to graduate because of that. Is there a way to track specifically how much success this is having in our alternative environments that may be relying on it more heavily? Can we track if our students' grades are maintaining, lowering? What they look like when they go through the success centers? What they're looking like in other alternative areas that we use them? So we can see as, when we spoke before, if this is the best program for those, those schools specifically?
Yes, so we'll do that for you. We'll look at the students that are taking it and, and track that.
All right, thank you. Member Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a quick question, though. How, how are, how does this help the disability? Say if you, if a student has a disability like, let's say, let me give a good disability, I'm thinking of one. How about, how about if a student has the disability of, of EMH? I'm just saying something like that, for example. How, how is this program going to help students like that?
In the virtual environment, it allows for students to work at their pace. It allows them to redo assignments so that they can make sure that they're mastering the content. I know that several of our high schools also use them with their, their Learning Strategies courses so that they have the ESC teacher there to help support the student to ensure that they're mastering the content before they earn the credit.
Okay, because I was, I was curious about that. I was reading about it and I was curious. And I had some constituents that asked me how is this going to help students with disabilities? So you answered the question. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Washington. Member Combs?
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. There's no question, class size and the quality of teachers, the most important thing. I mean, everybody wants a high, you know, very effective, you know, small classroom. But I, there's no question Ingenuity is so important. I, I've seen firsthand where there's several students. I know a good friend of mine's child probably would have never graduated, very brilliant, but had a lot of anxiety and couldn't go to school. I think of a student who, who wants to be on the school board one day, who's about to graduate, and I know everybody knows, and they would not be graduating coming up this summer if it wasn't for Ingenuity. I think a lot of times, people don't realize that there are circumstances with children. It might be family, it might be health, it might be whatever responsibility that they may have. And sometimes, you know, we want that classroom, but some, a child may work best at home. And I've seen the process where they go and they have to take the exam, they have to prove it. So it's, we're making sure that there is, you know, validity, it's effective, and we're making sure it's consistent. I think this is a very, very important program. I think thousands and thousands of students would have graduated because of one or two credits or something happened. So I think it's really important in this day and age, especially when things are becoming so virtual and people are looking at different ways of becoming educated. I think Ingenuity is, is very critical and very important and that we support that. And it may look different. And I think high schools and the principals that we put at hand, they're looking at how it can work most effectively in their schools. And so they're modifying it, or if a child's hospital homebound, whatever it may be, or the PACE programs or the Student Success programs. I, I leave it to all, to you, but I think this is a great program. I support it. And I think it really helps a lot of kids get across the finish line, which is really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Washington brought up a good point, and, and I really would like a, a little more detail of an answer on that because, because Ingenuity is in different environments that don't always have administrations or don't have, you know, they do have maybe a teacher like PACE or DJJ and some of our other environments that are not traditional. If we, is there a process or we, somewhere where we're identifying if there is a disability and this is not working? Are we considered to look at what alternatives we could do instead of? Because I mean, I, I, that does occur in those environments. And I don't, what is our alternative? Because the 504 IEP, it's going to be implemented a little bit different in those environments. It's really not implemented, but yet this is the manner of curriculum. And, and I agree with Member Combs, this is a very important item that I'm going to approve. But I would like us as a district to look at if this is not the answer for individuals with disabilities in those special environments, looking at what we are doing to get them through as much educational knowledge as we can so they don't reoccur in those environments.
And I agree, Ms. Rendon. And one, something is just like in our traditional school success centers with our own ESC specialists, just monitoring the kids and the progress of the kids. It's something that we have to take in account of what really is working if we're serving for the needs of the individual students and their IEP. So, yes, ma'am.
Right, because when we step out of that traditional school model, we don't have the ESC specialists, we don't have that oversight. So then I'm going to look to us as a district level to be that oversight to say, what are we doing to meet those needs? Because their disability is not, may not manage well with Ingenuity and we may not catch it.
And we agree, it's not a one-size-fits-all model, more for ESC students as well.
So if, if Superintendent, if we could just kind of take that in the back and, and kind of look to where we see on that? Because those special environments where we are using Ingenuity that's outside of our traditional model, we want those students to succeed. We don't want them to circle back into that environment again. So however we can do that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Seeing that there are no further questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to 402, Health Insurance for 2026. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Here we go, yes, 402. So if you recall, board members, 402 is an agenda item at our last school board meeting on June 17th. I postponed our, that item and directed staff to bring it to today's meeting with the contract attached. Our district priority prioritizes having a comprehensive health insurance plan for our employees. It is a large portion of our total compensation and it's personal to each of us and our families. Given that health insurance must be bargained with our unions, we have a health insurance committee comprised of union and district employee participants. They hold publicly, publicly notice meetings to review our employees' health claims data and medical cost trends and to make plan changes based on those trends. I would like to publicly thank this committee for their work on such a tough and important issue. With health insurance costs going up across the nation, the plan we are bringing to you tonight projects that our district will contribute more than $190 million in the 25, 26 school year towards employee health coverage. We will have new plans next year with a variety of deductible options. This does include a higher deductible on the zero premium plan, which was a consideration not taken lightly, but it helps avoid even larger premium hikes and loss of benefits. As a result of our move to self-funding in the 2026 year, the agenda item tonight is $26,859,000 lower than what it would have been had we maintained a fully insured plan. As a reminder, last October, our district held a school board workshop to discuss the self-funded health insurance. Since that time, our human resources staff, Dr. Patton, Dr. Schatzberg, and our chief financial officer, Mr. Lewis, has held numerous meetings with board members, district leadership and union leadership. Some of the highlights of the renewal at the, as discussed at the October workshop, Aetna will continue to be our health insurance carrier. These new plans will be offered with a variety of deductible options. All plans will have national networks and co-pay options to help limit out-of-pocket costs. Employees will continue to have access to a $0 premium plan. Employees will continue to have $0 copays, $0 copays for CVS Minute Clinics, CVS Virtual Care and Behavioral Health visits. And finally, employees will continue to have a wellness program that rewards our healthy behaviors like having annual preventive care and reaching wellness goals through our vitality. So that is 402. And I know, Dr. Patton, if you want to add a little bit more to 402, please.
I did, thank you, Superintendent. And I appreciate the board giving an opportunity for me to share just a few key points, as well as a few that Dr. Schatzberg will share. One of the things I just want to bring to your attention in the packet that you requested is that we do have a comparison with other districts, so you can have that information at hand. There's also a roadmap that includes a three-year plan included in there as well that gives just a plan, which I think that was one of the questions that you had, as well as a vetted contract that's in there with Aetna that's vetted by legal as well as procurement team. So we went through that process and included that as part of your request. The other thing I just wanted to share that when we did have the workshop, one of the things that you asked us to do was to ensure that there was a minimization of disruption to the employees' access to existing providers and choices to where they receive their care. The other piece that's in here is the plan design. And I want to point out that the plan design was ensured to be employee-centric and a holistic approach. Part of that was that we wanted to utilize the expertise that we have of the consultants that we utilize, as well as making sure that we worked closely with our unions. And, you know, we've got union representation here tonight to share that we did have that close-knit work with them on making sure that it was a plan that was clearly vetted and not looked at in one, what framework, but just, you know, holistically again. We wanted to make sure that our goal was to make sure it was robust and competitive, benefits, having a well-being program and that it was comprehensive care. So those were other key things we kept in mind as we looked at the plan. And just want to say that whenever we're looking at benefits as a whole for the employees and the staff, that we are taking into consideration that this is our tool for recruitment. It's our tool for retention. And it's our tool to care for our staff. And that's really important. And we value our staff. And I think we had a good example of a staff that we were able to retain because they said they not only came and had a great salary, but also have access to great benefits. So were there any key points you wanted to share, Dr. Schatzberg?
Dr. Patton, you did good. Yeah, and so did you, Ms. Ayers. So no, I, I really think you covered it thoroughly. I would like to just take a moment to recognize the group behind because it, it is a big, comprehensive effort. Thank you to the union. Thank you, Stephanie, for sitting up here. She came from the back to sit up front, so we appreciate that. We've got folks from Aetna and Aon. We have, the employee benefit staff came on their time off because they wanted to support our efforts. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. And just lastly, making sure that when we're looking at everything we're doing, it's always about, in the end, it's about having a good product within the claims. We have to keep in mind what claims are costing so that as we're setting premiums, we're able to pay for the claims. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, that is the agenda item.
Thank you, Superintendent Ayers. I need a motion and a second to approve C 402. I have a motion by Member Combs and a second by Member Washington. Member Rendon, Member Gray, and Member Combs pull this item. Member Rendon? Would you like to start us off?
Let me first say, my comments have absolutely nothing to do with Aetna as a carrier. My comments have absolutely nothing to do with the committee that has reviewed the product that has been put in front of them. My comments have to do with, I believe that we have not given full transparency of options to all of our employees to make recommendations. And, and I have, understand, I look at this comparison, I think it's wonderful. Pinellas is one of those comparisons. Pinellas has the exact same benefits as Hillsborough County. Both Aetna's benefits in Pinellas County is identical to Hillsborough County. Our deductibles are different and our costs are different. Because we did not with fidelity give that same option to our staff, to our unions, or to the committee for them to make a full disclosed decision. I did get a copy of the benefits from Pinellas so that I knew that it was absolutely identical. And I am more than happy to share that. I got them also from Polk County, which has a much lower amount of employees than our district does. All of their copays cost out to their employees are all less than ours and they have a zero premium product to all of their staff. So, like I've said in the past, and I will continue to say, I am disappointed that our HR department did not get a full fidelity of options for our union, our staff and our district to review before bringing a single product to the table. And until we do that, I will always vote no. Not because I don't support our staff. Because I support our staff, I believe with fidelity that we absolutely should. Charlotte County is not on here. I have looked at Charlotte County's, they are much higher than ours. They have a completely different plan. But again, the committee has no idea about that. Neither does the union, neither do our employees. Because we do not have the fidelity to bring options to the table. Now, I would like to, I have a couple of questions about the roadmap, just so that I'm very clear and transparent on this. I see here where we submitted the attestation to the state of Florida. We set up the requirements, familiarize the team with the required recommendations. Then we go to the RFPs. Initiate and implement stop-loss effective. I believe that's only an RFP for stop-loss prevention, correct? Now we're going to initiate a, a benefits admin marketing position for an RFP. And then we're going to do a pharmaceutical RFP. I see nowhere we're going to do a pharmaceutical RFP. I see nowhere in here by the end of 2025, because again, you guys have told me multiple times, it takes time to get an RFP, a minimum of 90 days to six months, where we have to have with fidelity to have the companies bring us presentations, knowledge. Yet by December 31st of 2025, one year from Aetna's contract, you are not bringing RFP regarding our medical benefits. I find that disheartening, considering you stated last board meeting that you were going to go after an RFP. I believe our committee would probably find that disheartening as well. 2026, again, I do not see anywhere in RFP that we have medical benefits being done with an RFP. Am I wrong?
So we are indeed going out to bid at the end of December. When you see at the very bottom, it says initiate medical/RX marketing. So it will happen in '25 for an effective date of January 1st, '27. And then when you see in '26, it talks about other marketing that we're doing. But it's happening in December, but actually, maybe even November.
I'm going to ask that we revise this to make it very crystal clear, because my expectation, I can only speak for myself, that we're going to see with fidelity full options to make a full choice. The committee, the board has the full fidelity of options throughout the state of Florida that our staff deserve to have better. So if you're going to go out, that's 1/127, you're going to go out for an RFP. So you're waiting.
Correct. It'll be effective 1/127.
The new plan or an RFP? Because now we're less than six months.
We'll do the, we're going to meet with procurement in a few weeks to get on their calendar, but we will go out to bid. Probably it'll go on the street in December, this December, in '25. Yeah. In order to, so if you look back a year ago, we actually started everything in the fall of the year before. Our committee met in the spring so that we could get information submitted for a June item. So it'll happen.
Well, we didn't really get information. We only got information from a single carrier. Let's make that clear.
I was talking about the RFP.
Okay. But we didn't go out for an RFP. We did not. So let's not, I don't want to, I don't want to say things that are not accurate. We did not go out for an RFP. We did not consult with anybody except Aetna. And like I've already told you, Pinellas and Aetna, we have the same exact policy. Agreed they have no zero plan, but then Polk does, and their benefits cost them less with a zero plan. So, now, I do also know that when it comes to dental, prescription, et cetera, all of our contracts have a, okay, I'll go get back in the queue.
Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Dr. Patton and Ms. Schatzberg. I know you worked hard. We've had many meetings, and I definitely appreciate that. I do feel a little bit, as you well know, just kind of rushed with a huge plan, very expensive, albeit we will save $27 million or more, or maybe a little bit less. And what happens when the board feels rushed, or the CTA, or, and/or our employees, we start asking questions. We are concerned. So these questions that I ask are from a variety of concerns, one of them being my own. When we had an opportunity, and I know it was a slice of time that we did not have, maybe available, but why didn't we go for, why didn't we investigate other self-insured companies? Now, I told you, the Central Florida school districts, we spent two years or more talking about converting from group to self. This was a few years ago, so probably that's not even relevant. But the point is, did you have a curiosity to bring to the board, perhaps, that there's other self-insured entities, vendors, that you could have shared versus just Aetna? Just for, for nothing else but education, for nothing else but education.
And if I could just jump in, and Dr. Patton, I believe that at that workshop, Ms. Gray, that workshop in October of this past year, part of the direction of the board was to stay, we had just moved, we had Umana, I think, for 28 years. Part of the direction was, we had just moved to Aetna, to keep Aetna for one more year, and then move forward with the RFP for the end of, for this coming up December 2025. So I remember the discussion from that workshop around, we had just moved to Aetna and keeping some continuity with the same health insurance. We had had Umana for 28 years, to avoid going out and switching again. So that was the direction staff went with, and at that point, they, you know, moved forward with Aetna. We have a fully insured contract already with Aetna. This is for the self-insured piece, which is a different, different contract. But, and to Ms. Rendon's point, just under 2503-year roadmap, understand the way it's written, maybe not as clear as it could be, but the intent, I'm saying it publicly, is by December of this year, '25, to go out for an RFP effective January of '27. Did I summarize? Okay.
So that settles that. That's the answer right there, and we will. So that particular concern was one of mine, but there was other folks that said the same, and a board member has also shared that. The next thing that I find, and this came to me in a few different pages, the deductible. There's a question of the deductible. I don't want to say that 20 times, deductible. But deductible individual with, that we had, the group was $1,250. Now it's going to be $4,000. For the family, $3,750. Now it will be $8,000. Remarking on this higher deductible down the line, out-of-pocket max $4,000, self-insured $8,000. Out-of-pocket max for families, $10,850 for group, $16,000. I can go down the line, but in every case, from the, you know, the prescriptions, the RX, specialist visits, urgent care, I know that we have Lantern. I know we have the surgery-free. I know the CVS, you know, and yea, yea, yea. But when we come to dollars and cents taking out of our pocket, which many people may not have, what do we say to that? What, the concerns of the deductible raised?
Okay, great question, and those are some questions that we've been getting. So, again, we looked at other districts to find out how they do it, and looked at their deductibles. And you can also see on the district comparison, you can get an idea of some of the deductibles in different districts. A huge piece of what we did is we looked at our own data, because we needed to see how our employees were doing it. And we know that we had less than 20% of our employees meet the deductible last year. Less than 1% of them met the out-of-pocket deductible. So it was when we saw that hardly anybody met it, that it made us feel better about it. But what we'll be introducing next year that we don't have in place this year are some unique copays. So for example, this year, if you were to have an MRI, and you hadn't met your deductible yet, you would have to pay that, and it could be upward to $800 for an MRI. Next year, we're going to have a radiology copay of $400. So it wouldn't be more than that. So we're going to have these little stopgaps in there that should keep people from meeting deductibles. We feel like when they meet the deductible, it will likely be someone who may have surgery, which is why we'll be talking about in another item, the opportunity to have Lantern. But those are the things that we looked at. Not many people meet it. Could they meet it? It's possible. What we talked about doing is making the decision of, do you have employees pay more in their paychecks, which means they would pay less when they go to the doctors? Or do they pay less in their paychecks and more if they go to the doctor? Kind of like with your car insurance. When it goes up, you ask, okay, can I go a little higher on the deductible, because I don't ever get in accidents? Or, I get in accidents all the time, and I need to make sure that I have a better deductible.
So, and thank you for that answer, Ms. Schatzberg. Can that be, can deductibles at this point be negotiated? Or are we just?
At this point, what we've done is we, with Aon's help and our committee, we've modeled many different ways. And if we are going to pay for claims, like I talked about at the beginning, in the end, that the claims are the claims. So we've got to have a plan that's actuarially sound, and we really need to leave those copays where they are. If you've got employees who are concerned about it, then they could choose to pick a $1,000 deductible plan, the HMO, or the high PPO, which is a $2,000 deductible. So there are some options for employees. Any employee who's on the local plan stays on the local, stays on the low PPO plan will have no increase. I think we're going to have some employees who are on the staff and select plan really start to pay attention and recognize they might be better off on the low PPO because they're not using their deductible or meeting their deductible.
Well, when you have a tool that we can use for recruitment, we darn well better say those, you know, the advantages of where we're going to. And I can't emphasize that enough, because you are getting some pushback. The last thing I want to say in this short amount of time that I have, we talked about this, Superintendent Ayers, you know, we have, I don't know how many vendors with this, but vendors need attention. There's going to be questions. There's going to be expectations. How many employees are we going to have that now will turn into, because we're going to be an insurance district. We will be managing huge insurance claims and all the other stuff. So let's get an answer on that one.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the, what's the question?
What's the question?
It was a lot. They were all good. I'm just not sure what the question was.
What is the question? Yeah. What is our staffing going to look like to handle the self-insure?
Okay. Staffing, and I'll let Ms. Schatzberg answer that one, the staffing, because we are moving, so this, and I want to reiterate, like I mentioned, last board meeting, this is a move to self-insure. It's self-insurance to ultimately save this district money in the long run, but that entails staff that we might have to have onboard. So Ms. Schatz, Dr. Schatzberg, if you could, or Dr. Patton, just talk through what that self-insured staff might look like.
So we initially talked about it and did state that we have now posted and have a manager position that would help us as we begin this journey, because it's a journey. We have to understand that. Healthcare is evolving, and we want to make sure that we have the appropriate staff. So having our fiduciary responsibility of not just saying we want to hire up a bunch of staff, we've said we're going to start with the one as we begin the journey, but we're going to do the assessments by looking at where the claims are, what's coming in, and determine if we need to add additional staff to HR.
Okay. Now, with an appreciation of the word journey, people's lives, their health, mental, physical, social, emotional health. So I don't like the word journey, because this is not a game. This is real care needed, real money for deductibles. We have to take this seriously. So that word, to me, I don't care for that with utmost respect. The last thing, and I am going to support this, because the final analysis is, we will lose a great amount of money as a district. 30 more seconds? How much are you saying we're saving? You said $27 million?
That's correct. By moving to self-insurance, Mr. Schatzberg, make sure, $27 million, I think it was 26.8, but $27 million approximately, by moving to self-insurance. If we stay with a health insurance plan as is, it's an additional $27 million cost. Correct, Mr. Schatzberg?
And that's minus the person, the office manager? Does that include that salary?
Well, that salary, $27 million, you're talking whatever that salary might be for a manager.
Okay, all right. So I'm splitting hairs. So, right now, as an individual board member, we cannot afford to lose that much money, because we are now just being drained in every way possible. So I will support it. Thank you. But that question, those questions that you're hearing from me came from constituents, and one of them came from me. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to have some clarification with the contract. As we said, as I can understand it, and I need some clarification from you on our costs that we are putting out to the, in order for the broker and the service fees. I, to my understanding, that will be $10 million, almost 11, about $10.9 million in fees and brokerages to the broker company, correct?
The bulk of that amount would be going to Aetna. No more than 825,000.
Yeah, no more than 825,000 would be going to Aon, the broker. Oh, so more than that? Because it's got on here the broker and service fees?
It's in there. I can find it for you.
I'm on page, just so you know, I'm on the Hillsborough County Public Schools, the effective date administrative fees in the contract itself, page one of the actual fees of what we'll be spending for this process. There's two factors in it. One of them is going to be the medical, the medical fee and broker compensation, which is $911,000. Where is that going? It's per enrollee. You're estimating 19,000 enrollees, which is close, at $47.98 per enrollee. That's actually going outside of our coverage to a broker.
So it's per Aon's contract, when they won the bid in '20, their cap is 825,000. So if we ended up with 30,000 employees, even though there's a per employee per month charge, that's how, that's how Aetna is kind of building it in, but they will not pay them more than 825,000.
But in the contract, it actually says the estimated number times the actual per enrollee. It comes out to $911,667.98. And there is nowhere in this contract that says that Aon is only getting $800.
Could I introduce Natalie from Aetna? Sorry?
I'm going to crouch here. There's not another chair. Good afternoon. My name is Natalie Gonder Jones. I'm the Director of Service. Thank you.
Ah, there you go.
Thank you.
Oh, there's a chair.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay. So what Dr. Schatzberg was saying is that in our contract, the fee that Aon will be paid is actually included in the service fees. It is actually $3.62 PEPM. Member Rendon, I think what you're referring to is the fact that when you take that PEPM fee times the number of employees, you're coming up with the 900, over 900,000. It is actually capped.
Okay, so, but in the contract itself, and I go through all the different fees that we are going to be paying out, that it has nothing to do with medical benefits. This is just the fees for having the outside entity running that. It doesn't say in here that Aon is only getting $800,000, the $3 and some cents. Where on, because I'm looking on the next three pages, which encompasses all the fees, I don't see anywhere where there's the $3 and some odd cents.
We'll pull that up for you. It is.
I apologize. That is on the third page. That's, no, that's only $1.65.
No, I've got all the fees right here. I've combed this contract. Yes, thank you. Okay. So it's actually, I've got a page number here. It actually is in the, if you're in the section where we list out what is included and excluded, it's sort of.
Correct.
Guess that's probably sort of middle way, middle way through the actual contract that you have before you. There is a section that talks about producer compensation under billing information, and there it does indicate the numbers that I had referred to, the $3.63, excuse me, $3.62 per employee per month of producer compensation capped at the $825, $825,000 annually.
You're saying that's under where?
It's under the section, it's called billing information, under producer compensation. I wish I had a page number here for you.
I see it. Okay, so yeah, it is on page 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Page 6, right before underwriting. No, I'm sorry, 6, 7, 9, page 9, under billing information. So if I take the $3.62 times the 1,900, that's 825. So why does that not match on the first page? What is the, what is the difference?
So.
Because here, the medical fee with broker compensation, so does that mean that when I take out that $825,000, where does the other roughly $90,000 go?
It, they don't get it.
But where does it go? Because you're collecting it from our, it's being collected from our staff.
It is, so, once we, when we're billing the $3.62, it's part of your administrative service fees on a monthly basis. Once you have hit, in terms of compensation to Aon, the $825,000, we know, that is no longer part of the fee. So we adjust the fees. There's a year-end reconciliation to make sure that you're not paying more than 825 to Aon. So you'll.
Does that go back to the employees? Because you're taking out, out of their pre- Does that go back to the employees because you're taking out, out of their premiums, 4798 monthly? Again, and again, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. That's, it had, this, this has nothing to do with...
No, no, stop putting me on the spot. It's, it's really a matter of reconciliation. You all will, if, if that money is paid to us, the money is returned back to the district. So there's a year-end reconciliation, that additional 90,000 that you're referring to
Roughly.
Goes back to the district, and then that, you all account for that in, you know, however in your way. But we don't, we don't hold on to that money at all.
Okay, so, right now, Aetna's fee is about, is roughly around 10.9 million dollars.
Correct.
Okay. With that being said, and when I look through the entire contract, you guys are handling everything.
That's right.
I, I've yet to understand what we are going to hire another staff member to do because they are managing this entire medical plan. So I think that's going to be a question for HR on exactly why we need another staff when they are managing this entire plan. And if we hire another company, whatever, we need to have that discussion because it goes through very detailed, mental health, counseling, you know, patient care, case managers, the whole works within this contract of exactly what Aetna is going to be doing. My last question is, I recognize the fact that if we stayed fully insured, it's astronomical. Don't doubt that. My, my, I've gone back, by the way, Superintendent, I've reviewed twice that November meeting. We said as a board collectively that our priorities were that we did not want to show significant change to our doctors, to our care of service, to where they went to the hospital. We never were told by our district that by doing that and not even giving us the information that we could have, if we at least go out for an RFP, a possible scenario where we can maintain all of those things, but a different network. We don't know that answer because we never did it. So I want to make it very clear that this board did not necessarily direct them to stay with one carrier. They asked for the staff to be taken care of with the same doctors, the same, they didn't want change in their benefits, but not necessarily, we had an obligation, if you walked in and said that. I do have one more question, I may have to come back. And my question I'm going to be asking is, if the claims go over the premiums you collect, who bears that responsibility? And what is the comparison of claims of 2024 to 2025? That is, I mean, 2023 to 24? What are we looking at? And does that match our premiums? We've not been given that information.
Yes, to your question, Member Rendon, if the claims exceed the premium that has been collected, you're self, you would become a self-insured plan. It is ultimately your responsibility. One of the points that you actually brought up earlier was on the stop-loss policy, and essentially, a stop-loss policy is designed to help protect the plan from catastrophic claims. One of the things that we've seen this year, as a matter of fact, is significant catastrophic claims, very, very sick individuals, that if, under a self-insured arrangement, depending upon the deductibles that you have in place for stop-loss, those, those claims would be covered under your stop-loss policy. So we certainly recommend, almost, I would say, the majority of our stop-loss customers, or, excuse me, our, our medical customers have stop-loss to protect for the, from those catastrophic claims. So that provides you some additional cover, some additional protection and coverage, but ultimately, correct, ultimately, the responsibility is on the self-insured plan to cover, cover those claims.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Dr. Hahn?
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. Well, thank you, Member Rendon, for doing such a deep dive on this and the passion you bring to it. And the next time I have to call my insurance company, I'm going to have you sitting next to me. I think you have a little side business you could do. But, in all seriousness, it is always, there's always a lot of angst when you're moving, when you're changing the way that you've done something for so long and embarking on something like self-insurance. It's something that the board has been talking about since my first year on the board, which was seven years ago now, with Member Perez and Member Gray. So, you know, it took that long for us to get comfortable enough with the idea and the idea of change. That's how long it took for us to be having this discussion today. So, you know, I know there were some points during the workshop that were important to us. It was continuity of care, it was the cost, and it was having an RFP after one year. So if you could just reflect that a little bit better on the timeline, that would be appreciated because that's the first thing I looked for as well. You know, I, I don't, what I don't want to see, given that we're paying 10 million dollars to Aetna, I don't want to see the district build a health insurance kingdom within our walls. So it's funny because I had written down here, I would like to see a copy of the manager position description to know what they're doing, you know, and, and what you're paying them, and the type of experience they have to bring to that position. You know, because I, I just don't want us to, yes, we're saving money by moving in this direction, and I don't want to eat up that savings by all of a sudden saying, "We need a department and we need to hire 12 people." And, you know, I, I don't want to see that happen. And, you know, I, I just want to be reassured that we are going to compete, you know, go out to compete this because, looking at some of the information that was discussed today about surrounding districts and what they're paying compared to what we're paying, we have more members, we're a larger district, you know, it, it concerns me. So the faster we can, you know, kind of just get some comparison or put this out on the street to get some competition around it to see, because our, our biggest goal is to keep costs down for our employees. And when they are sick, to help them get the care they need so that wherever they are financially, they are not, we are not creating any barriers to care. I shared on this board in the last year, I've paid out of pocket for my MRI because it was cheaper than me, you know, going through my insurance. I pay a lot of money for my family insurance plan. That was, you know, sometimes I'm, I mean, it just, you know, it's frustrating. And it's still a lot of money. It's still, you know, 800 dollars or whatever, you know, it's still a lot of money. And, you know, a lot of our families, that would be a big barrier to their care to have to pay a deductible. You know, I just, again, I just had to, my deductible for procedure, and I actually postponed it, was going to be over 1,600, which I didn't understand because my deductible's not 1,600. So why are they charging me more? I mean, it was just, so, you know, this is, this is confusing and overwhelming for educated and highly educated individuals. We have a lot of employees that, you know, have language barriers already, and, and so we need to put, you know, make this affordable for everybody, not just the monthly payment, but really, we need to look at the type of care that, you know, the access to care and make that, make sure that's affordable too. And I know you've mentioned you have some, you know, we've talked about different things you can opt into, and I appreciate that, you know, but again, I'm not going to opt, I, I guess, you know, there's this, you know, and we've talked about this, I'm big on keeping my doctors and being able to have input into choosing whether it's a surgeon or, you know, a GP or a pediatrician for my child or a specialist for something. I want to have that option, so I understand I'm probably going to have to pay a little more, but I also think, that's not, you know, I also think everybody has the right to the best care possible. So, you know, those are just some things I think we need to keep our eye on and I'll, you know, as we move forward in the next year or so. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hahn. Member Combs?
Thank you. We've spent a lot of time on this, and I think it's really important. We've, we've spent a lot of time on the workshops, we've kind of, you know, had it at the last meeting and been able to kind of reflect and talk about it. I think, I hope our district realizes how important we think this is. There's no question that a lot of people will work for insurance even more than salaries. I mean, that's probably the most important thing. I know, for me, years ago, I experienced being on Cobra for a short time because I was self-employed. I remember paying almost 2,000 for Cobra every month, so, and that was for like four or five months, you know? So I know how important it is. We're seeing health insurance change so much in this country. I mean, things are vastly moving really quickly. Health insurance, the health of people is very important. So I think you've heard from this board, we definitely, I think you had a short runway. I think, I want to say, you know, you know, Dr. Schatzberg, you do a great job. You work very hard. You always answer. Every time I call you, you'll pick up the phone. It doesn't matter when it is, on the weekend, anything. I just want to thank you for all the hard work and the commitment, not just from you, but from your team as well as the committee. I think, it's like, there's no perfect answer. It's very difficult. I mean, I'm personally on the health insurance myself here at the, at the district, so I'm going to be impacted as well. So I just want people to know that we're, I'm thinking of them, I'm thinking of myself, I'm thinking about everyone. So it's going to, and I know that insurance is going to start increasing. You're seeing it everywhere. So I think we know we want to go to an RFP, we know what we want to do, compare, we've got some information, data. We also have to remember about our connections, right? We were with Humana for a long time, we've been with Aetna new. We want to make sure we have that good relationship. We, you don't want to come and think that you're not going to really want to work with Hillsborough County Public Schools because we're such a difficult district. We just want to have the best deal for our, for our, for our employees. We also want to work with people. So I think the longer time you have, I think the better it'll be because then you have time to go out for an RFP, you've heard from us. But I think absolutely, I'm going to support this today. I think it's tough with the premiums, but I think you're seeing it probably, I, I think you can find very little, few jobs right now where there's not some type of impact with the health insurance and things are changing. So I think that's a fact. I think you can look all across. As such a large employer, should we be able to get the best deal? Yes. You know, we should absolutely be able to do that. Are there going to be five or six companies? No, because some people do, will not have the infrastructure. So we've got to be very careful, that we also are very careful who we vet, that they can follow through. Because a lot of times, people promise things, I mean, I feel like that happened with Synergy. You know, we, we were promised one thing and it was very difficult. So I think we, just after a year like last year, I personally did not want to make some big change. I think just self-insurance, one step, making sure we save money in the direction is, is correct. To go completely change 18360, I think we didn't have enough time. I really don't think we had time. And if we want to think we had time, I don't know, working out the details, we're at this point right now, we have to vote for it, we have to support that, and we have to just keep moving forward. And, and thank you and the board for working on this. And just know that we do, we do care about every premium. I think about, you know, surgeries and things that I've had in the past, so we're, we're appreciative and we're going to continue working to having the best, best policies we can for our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is it possible that we, as a board, can see our claims from last year and where that ceiling goes for that stop-loss gap happens? Because we need to know what we have to anticipate as a board, and if it's going to exceed the 190, well, actually, 180 million, because 11 million we're putting out for, out of this 190. So I think that's something that whether you, whether we do it, Mr. Porter, I don't know how we need to do it, but we've got to know what we anticipate. Financially, we need to know what we anticipate. We also need to understand when we have that stopgap, which no matter when you go to self-insurance, even if you don't have self-insurance and you're fully insured, it's recommended you have stopgap for those catastrophic illnesses. It's very recommended. That's not an uncommon thing. But we've not been educated as a board on what that is, where that coverage stops and goes, and who's covering that stopgap? Who's carrying that, those claims? Who's paying for those? What is that costing us, other than we see within the plan? But who's carrying that stopgap and what is it going to cover? How much were the claims in 20, where are we at with claims? Do we know it's going to go over? Because there, there's a lot that goes into health insurance, a lot of other things, and if you've watched the legislature from the last year, there's a lot of health insurance questions. So I want to make sure that we are very aware and prepared. I, I appreciate the fact that we have a healthy fund balance to take care of it this year, but I am going to say, right here on the dais, right now, I am not going to be happy if December 31st, I'm told that we have 50 million dollars that we have to put out of claims that went over because we weren't given the full truth today. And that has nothing to do with Aetna. That's not their responsibility. It's our district's responsibility. So we've never seen what our claim numbers are. We have zero idea if this is going to be enough. We really don't. And if I, and I'm, I'm pretty sure there's a lot of different factors that go into this, there's billing issues, there's a whole bunch of different things that go into this. And so if I went into more detail, it would just get more confusing. But at the end of the day, we're responsible for claims and we have no idea how much claims are going to be or what we can anticipate. All we know is, what can, concerns me is that you said if we stayed self, fully insured, that we're going to have a 30%, actually, I think you told me in my office, 40%, but I'll give you 30% increase in our insurance, but yet we're still utilizing Aetna's fee for services for our, when we go to the doctor, we go, so how are we not going to still have that cost? And we, we don't know that. We've not been educated on that. So this is, these are the concerns that I have. So do you have, you've got a copy of the claims?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we clearly looked at the claims, and I'm, I'm sorry to think that you wouldn't think we would look at the claims. Our, our committee dove into the claims. When we do our stop-loss, we will be bringing it to you, we will be having a bid, and we will be bringing that information to you. You all will see it all there. That's totally transparent. We wouldn't...
With all due respect, the committee is not approving 190 million dollars. This board is. If you gave the committee that information, at the very minimum, you should have provided that to this board. It is our name, it is the chair's name on that contract. It is our responsibility to do it correctly. So I, I'm sorry, but that's almost insulting, that you would not provide it to us, who's making the decision, but you would provide it to others. I'm not going to support this because I have said from the beginning, back in, a year ago when we've had these conversations, 18 months ago, Superintendent, when you started, I flat-out said, if we do not go out for an RFP, this is 190 million dollars, I have no idea the claims, I have no idea these questions. It's not because I don't think our employees deserve better, it's because I think they deserve better that we should expect better. And so I, I understand where my board's coming from because, quite frankly, we're down to the wire. But we should not be continuously put in this position where we have to approve things without full information at the last minute. And that's what we're constantly put in front of us. So I'm not going to approve this, but I want it very clear, nothing to do with Aetna, nothing to do with the committee, nothing to do with our staff. It's because I expect better for our employees and from our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Member Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, one thing we, I realize, because I've been in the system for a long time, every time we have changed providers and so forth, we had the same type of discussion, what, 14 years ago or maybe a little bit, Tracy, you were here, we, we changed the providers? Yeah. And it, it was an uproar because we are, we are comfortable in what we do. I think in this case, we, we need, we need to pass it. I mean, I'm, I'm going to vote yes because I don't have, we don't have a choice. I just had some of my constituents calling, maybe two weeks ago, they want to come back to work. They don't want to come back to work because of the money, they want to come back to work because of insurance. The insurance is very expensive, and every time you look, it goes up and up and up and more. So, but one thing we need to understand, to get a clear understanding with simplicity so we all can understand the operation of the insurance. Because if we don't do that, we don't continue having the same, the same argument over and over and over again because we, we don't understand. And we are not providing the providers that the people want. Now, one good point I like about it is we, we can keep our providers because that's one of the things that, that I understood some of the people were saying, well, we want to keep our, we don't want to lose this person, we want to keep our doctors. And that's important, I understand that's very important, but it's all, it's also important to protect the district for money, money-wise. It may seem like we're not doing, you know, we, we are arguing what the case may be, but we are here to protect the district too, as well as our employees. So it's so important... important, when it come back around, we should have everything we need to have and we, we, we won't have these questions again. Because everybody will understand what we are doing. And if we're hiring someone, if we are not hiring someone, we're all to understand. So we don't, I don't have a choice. I'm going to vote yea now, but we do need to do something a little bit different. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Member Washington. I've waited a long time to speak. Um, so my thoughts kind of center around, I don't share any ill intention that you or the committee or anyone has any negative intent in sharing and doing the best they can to try to figure out what to do as we transition, transition to self insurance. I do have concerns over the way that we supposedly have made decisions, the clarity around that, also around communicating with our employees. And this actually falls directly on you, Superintendent Ayers. Um, you know, I think that having one workshop to get direction is not a good forum for a decision as big as this. I expected that to be an opening place for us to have conversations. And just as we've decided there are other topics that are so big, we need to have multiple workshops. We should have had that because I don't remember consensus about choosing Aetna. I remember there were some members who were very passionate and rightly so. I don't necessarily disagree with them about keeping continuity. But there was not a, like, hey, how does everyone feel about staying with Aetna at any point during that workshop? And I said this repeatedly throughout that process. So to say that we gave clear direction at that workshop is problematic for me. Um, I think if we're going to be making bigger decisions that involve 20,000 people's access to healthcare, there should be way more than one workshop where somebody kind of passionately says what they care about and you take that as, as the direction that you need on a decision this big. So I am frustrated around that because I think that we should have had the space to talk about what exactly that means. And are we able to look at other providers and keep the same doctors and have these kind of discussions that we're having now several months ago before it gets to the point where board members are in a position where they feel like they have to vote yes for that. And I've expressed this, this concern across the board. I don't think it's to any ill intent. I think this is a new thing. It's a big decision. But I think we need to put better procedures and processes in for the board to be engaged in, in something about this. Um, I also want to just clarify, because my, my, my another frustration around this is that we have done no engaging with our employees at large. I understand there's a committee and I appreciate the committee's hard work and I don't disagree that they're a good representation of our workforce. But once information gets out, even though we've talked about this at length at several board meetings and workshops now, our employees don't watch those workshops. They don't listen to those board meetings and they, they hear smatterings of this and it starts hysteria. And the amount of customer service work that I've had to do as a board member to provide clarity around questions is unacceptable. And when I asked why we hadn't sent out an email previous to this, just to introduce this to employees and say, hey, our rates could be so much more if we weren't going self insured, our, you know, our, everything has gone up for cost of care, and allowed employees to digest this before we had to come to as a board and make that decision without giving them time is a problem. And when I asked why there hasn't been an email sent out, what I was told is, well, we've never done that. We don't send out emails before a board votes on an item. And while I understand that that's never been done before, again, it's unacceptable for me to have to do the customer service work to give information to our employees that we should have given to them on the forefront as we make this decision. And I'm extremely frustrated about that. So I just want to be clear on that. So to that, I have questions from employees now that they understand that we might be changing. And I want to understand correctly, the heartburn around these are, for our members that stay on the free plan, right? The changes that they're going to expect are, one, the $4,000 deductible, which I'm glad only 20% use it. But for those who have an accident or anybody else who finds themselves in a life threatening situation, the fact that at a mere minimum, it's going to cost them $4,000 now, almost negates the millage that we go out for depending on who you are. So the $4,000 deductible is major heartburn for anyone. Um, there's going to be slightly higher copays for some things, $5 for each, like we've gone up almost every year. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. There will be some increases on copays and there will be a copay for a hospital. So if someone breaks their leg and goes to the hospital, they're not going to spend $4,000. So there will be things that offset those.
For the hospital stay, but depending on what else might fall within that being treated during that.
It, it could be a radiology copay within offset. There are lots of things that will help. But it is possible. You are right.
Appreciate your dedication to defending this plan. Um, so, so higher copays. And then the major piece of heartburn, and I'm sorry to go over, I don't think anyone else is in the queue, so I don't know if I need to get back in the queue. But, um, is the fact that, uh, families will pay more for their plans who have been covered going forward. Minus those things that I've mentioned, are there any other large pieces or changes that are going to finally financially impact our employees that we need to discuss right now?
In my opinion, I think, you know, we've covered it and any employee who's on the, I think I mentioned it before, anybody employees on the local plan with a family who stays on the low PPO will not see an increase in premium. Family will still continue to be what it is today. As I said, I do think we'll have some people, I think we'll have people from the high deductible be moving to the plan and they're going to save money.
Okay. Um, so, you know, I want to share with you some of the, the concern that employees are sharing with us, right, is they don't have understanding of what a self funded plan is. Many of them have been on a self funded plan and have a bad experience. So they're spreading information that self funded plans are just bad all around. They're also really saying concern that with the offsets of this, this medical change, that they are indeed paying for that with the millage increase. That we went out, we raised a millage, they're going to get this increase, but now with their medical going up, it almost negates from that. And I'm not saying that's true. I'm not validating that because you're, you're making several points. But by not getting out in front of our employees and sending out information to help them process this and being fair, that is the information that we have to deal with as board members now. Um, the last question I want to ask, and then I'll move on. I know we've talked about this forever, is when you say it would have cost us extra if we had not gone self insured, is that as a district but not passed on to our employees? Or would that cost no matter what have been passed on to our employees? Because I'm trying to understand, are we saving money as a district on the backs of our employees? Or would they have no matter what, seen a much higher plan sent before them? Or could we have subsidized that? I'm not saying I want to do that. Member Gray made a great point. We're in huge financial peril. We have to have these discussions at all levels. But I want to understand correctly, is that a cost we would have eaten? Or was that, is that a cost we're saving for our employees?
So we, we didn't have the conversation, but, um, you know, the district pays over 90% of claims, of, of premiums. So had we spent 26 and a half million more, typically the way it has worked in the past is if that is a 6% increase, then the district would have done it six and employees with dependents would have done their six. I said six, that's not the number. I just put that out there as an example.
But this is where we as a board get frustrated that you haven't talked about that and that conversation hasn't had. And we're making these decisions that we're going to be held accountable for. Because it doesn't matter if you bring it forward. Thank you for being here. It doesn't matter if it comes from you. At the end of the day, everybody thinks that we make every single decision that happens at the district and we're held responsible for this. So that's all I have to say about that. We've talked about it enough. Uh, oh, Superintendent Ayers, you jumped right in there.
So I think the comment around self funded plan, our employees feeling the difference of a self, a self insured plan versus a fully insured plan. I just want to get on the record, there should be, the employee should feel no difference whether on a self insured plan or a fully insured plan. Is that correct?
That's correct. It should be behind the scenes.
Right. No matter what, the self insured versus healthy insured is just behind the scenes, how we're taking care of things. The employee should not, will not know whether on a self insured or fully insured plan, the insurance plan is the insurance plan. We take of every, take care of everything on, on the backside with, with.
Would have been nice for her to email to say that.
Okay, okay. Um, and just, just to summarize, I, you know, we've, we've talked through this back, if we go back to the beginning, in December of 25 of this year, right? So here we are, July of 25. By December 31st of 2025, just make sure that our, our team knows there will be an RFP on the street or that process will begin. If you could just talk through that so we have clarity on the, on the, on the dais here around what that RFP process and Mr. Lewis, if you want to jump in, just to, we're clear, this board knows that as of December of 2025, we go out for an RFP effective date, January of 2027. So if somebody could just clarify that, that process of our RFP.
Yes, procurement has already met and we're working with HR already to build that plan that Superintendent Ayers just mentioned. Uh, the process will begin in July this month, uh, preparing the package and determining what will be in the RFP. And then we'll be submitting that in the fall. Uh, the drop dead date as mentioned is December, but it also, to Member Rendon's point, it could very well go out sooner than that. Our intention is sooner than later because we want to have enough time for the entire district to make the best possible choice, um, to there. As you meant, as also mentioned in the roadmap, there's other timelines that are out there. We can do, uh, we can work finance and HR to clarify some of those dates for you. But we just want to give you assurance is that we've already began the process of sending that out and that will be clarified and finished up in the early parts of the fall. And then the latest date that it will go out, December, we anticipated it much earlier.
And just, so for calendars, so we've talked a lot, just, we are, the, the insurance plan we're on now stays the same through December 31st, right? This, what we're approving tonight is for 2026, so January, December of 2026. After that RFP goes out, this would then, if depending on what happens in the RFP process, the new plan would go into place in 2027. So I just want to make sure whoever's listening, the timeline through the end of this year. So school's going to start August the 10th. The self, the insurance plan that we currently have, that remains in place until December 31st. January of 2026, the plan that's approved tonight goes into place. Then in 2027, as the 26 year is happening, that RFP process is taking place. And then we move forward, whatever that, however that process turns out for the 27 school year. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, our, our employees that are listening understand the timeline. I got it right, right? Okay. Just make sure that that timeline is, is correct, um, and moving forward. And, and, and Member Vaughn, I totally understand what I want to talk on the staff side about a communication of what staff meant about us putting out to our employees, something that hasn't been approved yet. It may seem to our employees that, hey, we already doing this. What do you think about it? When I, I just, I want to be careful of putting in the board in a particular spot of staff putting something out of this is what the plan looks like. Because our staff would then think that it's already been approved or that I'm, I'm, that that decision has already been made. So that was the only, um, that was why nothing went out to our employees and getting in front of, but I totally understand where you're, where you're coming from.
That we could find the wording, especially with ChatGPT, where we could make it incredibly clear to our employees that this has not been passed. This is a proposed idea that's coming to the board and we want to get feedback. I, I think that there is wording to make that very clear.
And if that's, that is something that has to do with the board moving forward, or, you know, we'll, you know, as we go through the one on ones, that I believe our staff has had one on ones with the board members throughout this process. If that's something, you know, moving forward, we've just been very careful of doing that to, so that people don't interpret that, you know, something's already been voted for and approved and it, and it hasn't. But I, I understand. Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that clarity. Um, Member Rendon, you're back in the queue.
All right. Thank you. I think when it comes to self insurance, every single provider that would like to be a part of a self insurance plan comes to the table with different plans. They look different. They, they, they create a plan specialized for your district. And with that being said, I think it's important that if we, when we go out for an RFP, that both the committee has the ability to have full presentations by those that went out for an RFP, like we do for lobbyists. They can give the, the board the recommendations based upon their presentation. And those same providers come and give us a presentation so that we have full transparency of exactly what was presented. Because I think that's part of the problem. We are not, there's no transparency on what options are on the table. So I, I don't need a decision today, but could we investigate what that looks like? So that there's a full transparency on what the package looks like? How did we make that decision? What were the options for doctors? What were the options of plans? And so if we create that where we have a meeting where they give the presentations of what that looks like, the committee sees that and is able to give us their recommendations, then we have a full view. And if we do that in a public setting, we then are able to get public comment from our employees because it's now recorded. It's all public, that we are able to do that. I think that's important for something this serious. I think it's very important to, we make sure our employees get full contact. So I think that's something we should investigate as we move forward.
Yeah. And just so, just so I'm clear, Mr. Porter, Mr. Gibson, you know, moving forward, um, what Ms. Rendon is referring to is how, you know, through our lobbyists, um, that is not a super, and when we choose our lobbyists, that is, that comes to the board through that process, they make, um, their, um, um, presentations to the board. The board ultimately makes that decision. We treat that one different than coming as a superintendent's recommendation. Most RFPs, staff handles, superintendent makes a recommendation. What I'm hearing is that for this particular health insurance, as we move forward, that we would treat it a little bit different, more like of the lobbyist one that brings it directly to the board. So we just have to investigate. I don't need an answer now, but just to.
Well, no, I mean, for the record, I think that's, that's certainly something you can consider. I would caution you about making that decision tonight. Yeah, right. I mean, that's certainly something, um, we can look at. As the superintendent said, you do do that with your lobbyists, but it just requires more thought. And I would caution against making a decision. But yes, we'd be happy to look at that.
Are you done, Member Rendon? Dr. Hahn?
Thank you, um, Member Vaughn. Uh, so in, um, given the comment, the suggestion you just made, I just want to remind everybody that the reason that we do that for the lobbyists is because they work for the board. And what, I, I wouldn't mind, you know, going, having, hearing the presentations, but at the end of the day, I don't want to get into a habit of all of a sudden the board is approving RFPs. And I think, look, I'm going to say it gets political. You're going to have a lot of people who, you know, this is a lot of money. And I think it's a very slippery slope. And I think, you know, um, it should come to the board as a recommendation from the superintendent to make sure there's no undue influence put on board members from large companies, people in the community. Uh, I just, I think it's cleaner. I think that, um, I think it's a very slippery slope to start getting into this habit. If you, if you want them to videotape the presentations, that's fine. But I do not think that that decision on, on choosing, um, that contract through an RFP should come to this board. I feel very strongly about that. Uh, that, that's a bad practice to get into, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hahn. Member Combs?
Uh, Member Hahn, I, I could not even, I could not agree more. I think it's really, really important because I am speaking as a board member. When you have a committee, you're representing a lot of different individuals. You're representing the teachers, you're representing the parents, you're representing the community, you're representing a lot of different areas. I personally can't imagine health insurance companies, I mean, they already contacted me anyways just because of the vote. I can't imagine if they thought I was going to be deciding that. I mean, it would be unbelievable. So that is something that I don't want to be put in that position. That is opening up a can of worms for, we could be doing that for, you know, if we're talking about Kelly Cert, we could be doing that for everything. And then what does that mean? Really, at the end of the day, we are just confirming, we can be more involved. We can, you know, talk more about it. We can make sure we have more workshops. One of the things that I'd really like to do with, uh, growth management is I really want to do a retreat. We should do a long retreat and work out a lot of these things that we're talking about. Because if not, it's always fragmented. So to talk about things, to discuss things, but I am strongly in support of having the committee and Superintendent, you bringing that recommendation. And as well as for the letter, I, I, we can't tell you what to do running day to day. If your cabinet feels like you should send that letter out to our employees, do so. But you can't have us as board members influencing your day to day activities. That's not our job. That's not what we're supposed to do. You're supposed to come if you want to talk to us one on one and get feedback or recommendations or see what we're thinking, that, that's appropriate. But the day to day, how you're running things and when you feel it's accurate or not accurate, to let people know or not let people know, that's why I have you hired. That's what you're here for. And so that's just how I feel as a board member. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just real brief, I, I would recommend to put, because it's fragmented in so many different directions, to put it on the suspended agenda for an update, self insurance update. Keep us updated, keep us in the loop. Um, and from that point, perhaps another workshop would have, you know, the board is mentioning so many different questions and rightly so. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gray. Um, my question is, and I'm going to ask this, even though you run the district, again, as somebody who's the customer service repository for the decisions that you make, is are you going to send a letter out after we've approved this, being very clear with all of the details to get ahead of it in front of our employees of what changes they're going to expect? to get ahead of it in front of our employees of what changes they're going to expect? Why they are? What prompted that? Exactly what we talked about today as far as not being able to tell the difference between self-funded and not self-infunded with messaging of who to contact? No, we don't need to see it, because we're not, we're not micromanaging the superintendent. So we shouldn't, we shouldn't see that, right? I mean, that's his job.
Yeah, so the communication piece staff is prepared to put that information out after it's approved tonight, if, if it's approved tonight.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all the questions I have. Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing that there are none, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes with Member Rendon voting no. Now we go on to 403, Lantern Specialty Care Contract. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Lantern Specialty Care Contract, we're excited to offer a new program in 2026, and this is Lantern Specialty Care. Lantern offers access to a network of highly vested board-certified surgeons in surgical facilities at a significantly reduced cost of up to 50% savings compared to average carrier market pricing. Employees who choose to utilize Lantern for their elective surgeries will have their deductibles, copays, and coinsurance waived. This is a totally, totally voluntary program. The district does not pay anything unless someone else, someone uses the service. The district will pay Lantern 35% of the savings realized by using their network. Several school districts throughout the state of Florida have been utilizing Lantern, and we're, are seeing significant savings. For example, Manatee County, as an example, should be realizing that savings of almost a half a million dollars in their first seven months of working with Lantern. Dr. Patton, anything else on, on Lantern you wanted to add there?
Yeah, just wanted to add that, again, we were looking at options in order for us to provide services to employees at no cost, because we have heard from you that you're concerned about the fact that they may have to have a cost that is not available to them at that time. So Lantern is one option, and it is something that they can either choose to do or not to do. So it's not that it's compulsory, it's, it's voluntary if they decide to do that.
And that's, Madam Chair, that's 403.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second to approve C 403. I have a motion by Member Perez, and a second by Member Gray. Member Gray, Member Rendon, and Member Combs pulled this item. Member Combs?
I think we've discussed things in detail, so I, I have nothing to say. Thank you.
Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is this a product that our employees have to choose to purchase when they renew benefits?
No, ma'am. They will automatically be eligible to do it if they'd like, and then when a surgery's needed, they would call Lantern and say, hook me up.
So we just sign up at no cost to the employee?
Correct.
The surgery occurs, they're using Lantern, you're picking up to 35%, district is picking up 35%?
So the district, and by the way, we have Ryan in here from Lantern if we have a question. The cost will be less because it's a negotiated rate, typically about half. So let's say there's a hernia surgery that's $14,000 normally, it's probably going to be more like $6,000. And then Lantern, so then there's a savings of, let's say for seven, for just use of math, there's a $7,000 difference, they're going to get 35% of that $7,000. So we're not, we're going to be making, we're still going to be paying a lot less than what we'd be paying normally on a surgery, and the employee would be paying nothing.
So basically, with any surgery our employees get, they're paying nothing?
Yes. But not brain and...
But how do we, how do you not, I mean, like, where do you choose it?
Say that again, I'm sorry? This is Ryan.
I hear the time of need, but, I mean, because when I, when I go, because here's what's going to happen, when I go to the doctor, I, I'm now going in, I'm going to have shoulder surgery, shakehead shoulder surgery. He has an appointment, and he goes in for shoulder surgery, I'm going to give them both my cards, right? I'm going to give them my Lantern information, I'm going to give them my Aetna thing, and they're going to tell me that Aetna is my primary medical, because if I have to be in the hospital, right, then, and I have to spend the night, that I'm going to use that insurance, it's going to be my primary. And so how does Lantern come in, and what is the actual surgery cost? Because when I go to the hospital to have surgery, my total cost is so much more. It's, it's the doctors, it's the anesthesia, it's, and the anesthesiologist, and it's the nurses, and it's the materials, and it's all the above. So where does that coverage come in, and how does it work?
Yeah, I'm happy to address as many details as you would like on that. I think that's one of the, the challenges with healthcare today, is that the way claims are paid are based on a percent of charges. And who knows when we go in, what different charges they're going to be? Our contracts are a negotiated bundle, we pay one price. It does not matter how many people want to charge something, it doesn't matter how many different things you have, or whether you're in the hospital for overnight, or you go home the same day. We're paying a contracted rate based on the primary CPT code, or the primary diagnosis-related grouping, which is if there's an inpatient stay. We've negotiated one price that's inclusive of all of those things, so you're not going to have that. And it can be done at the hospital, it can be done in the surgery center, we have a network that covers both. What I will tell you is that in most situations, probably not going to be the same surgeon. And that's why there's choice, that's why people don't have to use us.
Okay.
Because we are extremely narrow, we've got a great network here. In fact, I was looking before we came, last year, we performed north of 2,000 surgeries in Tampa across our members. I think we're with 12 or 13 different school districts, the state has us. And so that's why it is a choice, is because it does usually require change. And so the member will have to engage us, they'll engage one of our 250 care advocates. That care advocate will explain to them, no, you are going to show your Lantern card. They're also going to give them detailed bios of three surgeons based on the specific procedure they need, that have been qualified by us to do those procedures. So at that point, the member can say, yes, I want to go see Dr. Smith. Of the three choices, our care advocate will then facilitate medical records transfers, they'll get in touch with Dr. Smith's office, make them aware of the patients that needs to be scheduled, you'll go see Dr. Smith for an evaluation. If Dr. Smith says, yes, in fact, you do need shoulder surgery, they would then schedule and book us as the primary insurance. And so those claims would come to us, they'd be paid under our contract.
Okay, so with your bundle, does that include aftercare? So if I'm now released from the hospital with at-home care, do I then flip back over to Aetna? And will Aetna now cover a surgery aftercare that they did not approve from the beginning? Because again, my surgery may not have been approved by Aetna because I've not done, because in many situations with our health insurance in the state of Florida, we have pre-qualifying things you must do before you get to that level. If I've not taken those four steps before I get there, will that cover, will I then, will Lantern or Aetna cover my aftercare? And who's going to educate me on that? Because that's, that's a big concern of mine.
So your care advocate will educate you immediately. You're also, every single member will get not only a welcome kit at the beginning of the plan year, but I know people aren't going to remember that, right? If we're going to be being very honest, they're going to get a kit, explains all this, they're not going to remember it. So once they engage a care advocate, they're going to, again, get very similar kit, explains in detail what is covered, what's not covered. And things like if it's home healthcare, or you need to go to a skilled nursing facility, we would work with Aetna to transition that, so that the member doesn't have to deal with it. We've got tons of experience doing that with Aetna, we've, with all the carriers. Things like your follow-up visit with your surgeon, those are all included in the bundle. So all of your follow-up care, typically for Medicare Global period, which is usually 90 days, all of that's covered in the bundle. Oftentimes, physical therapy, if it's done at the doctor's office, where you have the procedure, that'll be covered, we cover that because of compliance. Physical therapy is critical after surgery, but I know having, I think similar to you, I had shoulder surgery last August, and I'm, my deductible was $7,500, my out-of-pocket max was $11,000. We just became self-funded this year, when we finally were large enough as a company. I paid my $11,000 out-of-pocket max, but I'll tell you, getting to it, those $50 PT copays going three times a week, made it a challenge to go three times a week. And so we think it's really important that those things are included. Now, if you decide to go to your own physical therapist somewhere else, again, that would transition to Aetna, and our care advocates will help the member with that.
Okay, so I will say, I mean, there's no cost to the employee, it's an employee choice program, and I'll approve it because of that, but I would like more information on when Aetna does not, because there are some surgeries that there, like I said, there's a step process with, with a, with a plan of care, that you have to go through certain things before you can get there. And if Aetna would not have approved the surgery, and now we go through Lantern for the surgery, what's the after of that? Like, if then I have a complication six months later because of the surgery, will Aetna cover it? I, I want to know those details. I am not going to take away a choice from a employee that doesn't cost the employee anything, other than I want to make it clear that here's another situation, that if we were going truly with an RFP, we could have built the full package and looked at different things. So I think that's important to understand, that we're adding on to an additional self-care, because we did not go out and build a package. So this could have been a package we would have built as one, and not individually like this, because how many more are you going to bring? When you go to self, self-insurance, all of the prescriptions and everything could be all one bundle through your plan. So we've not done that, and we're now adding on to that $190 million. So I under, it's not free to the district, we're paying $300,000.
Not if no one uses it. If no one uses it, you don't pay a penny.
Okay.
That's my commitment. My daughter's a public school kid here in Florida, I'm an executive of the company, have been for 10 years. One of the things that I've done with every single school district is made this commitment, you do not pay us a dime unless people use the service, and we can show with data that you saved money on that. That means we'll eat 100% of the costs of sending out ID cards, marketing, any materials members need, all that customer service. We don't, we will not charge a school district and the state of Florida a penny for any of that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You, Member Rendon. My question is, you mentioned you have a very narrow list of providers. Why is that?
A couple of reasons, and I will be very, very clear on this. First, it's to keep our price where it is in terms of what we actually pay for surgery, right? The minute you let everybody participate, you lose all negotiating power. So part of the way we're able, able to keep the cost down is to limit the number of providers, so it brings value to those surgeons, and most importantly, the facilities. Because the facility is 85% of the cost of surgery, not the surgeon. Surgeon, on average, for like a joint replacement, make about 5.8% of the total cost of the surgery. So we have to narrow the, the number of facilities, so we can create value to them by driving business to them that otherwise may not have come through their doors. So creative revenue allows them to look at their costs much differently. And the other reason is the qualification process that these surgeons have to go through. Surgeons to be in our network, they have to be board certified. In the Tampa Bay market, that eliminates 40% of orthopedic surgeons. They have to be board certified. They have to hit certain volume requirements by CPT code or by procedure, they have to do a year for them to be able to perform a surgery on one of our patients for that procedure. They have to have done oftentimes fellowship training, depending on the type of procedure, that extra year of specialized training after, after residency. They have to have clean malpractice histories, meaning no truly negligent or egregious malpractice. They cannot have a state, state sanction in any of the 50 states, meaning they've had their license suspended, reprimanded, or revoked in any of the 50 states. Those type of criteria typically, and I can tell you in the case study we did in Tampa of orthopedic surgeons, it leaves us with about 25% left that we can contract with. And so I think that's really important, because then we track outcomes, and our outcomes are substantially better than when people are left to go to loan. So those two things are the biggest drivers, to keep costs down and improve outcomes, and so the network definitionally has to be much narrower.
Okay, that answers my question. Are there any other questions or discussion around this item? If not, please vote when your light... And the motion passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to 601, approval to advertise the 2526 tentative budget and millage rates for Hillsborough County Public Schools. Jamie Lewis, Chief Financial Officer, will highlight this item.
We just want to summarize 6.01 for you, and that is, this is the annual process of the beginning of our budget season. And so 6.01 is the approval of the board to advertise the 2526 tentative budget and millage rates for Hillsborough County. That's a statute requirement by the state of Florida, and this is what the process we do every single year as we get ready for the first hearing later this month, and advertising publicly of that first hearing budget.
All right, I need a motion and a second to approve, I turned to the page, let me go back. To approve 601, I have a motion by Member Rendon and a second by Member Perez. Member Gray, you pull this item. Do you have a question or a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have a few questions, and when we look at the DOE, the Department of Education, had a $47 million shortage in their budget, and I don't, Jamie, we, Mr. Lewis, we didn't have the fourth, fourth calculation yet, right? Is that...
No, ma'am, we are still waiting on that.
So this question might not even be relevant, but let me give it a go. How will it affect our budget, the $47 million from the Department of Education?
Yes, ma'am, I think I pulled the lucky straw this year of starting at a year where a lot of stuff has been delayed. I say that jokingly, but that's, that's the challenge ahead of us. As you remember, the third calculation was delayed for various reasons. That kind of set in motion, I believe, the continual delay. Obviously, the budget for this year was a much later date than, than previously, and so with it just being signed by the governor late in the process, you know, that, that delays everything. It's our understanding that the fourth calc from the Department of Education, they have confirmed they're working on that, they have not scheduled a release date that we know of yet. We are aware that the state's budget is, is short about $47 million. That does not, that does not necessarily mean that we'll see part of that shortage, but obviously that will be represented on the fourth calculation when received.
And I thank you for that. And my, my question, the genesis of my question now is about food service. And I know Shaney Hall's not here, but I gave you the question beforehand, because what happens is, when we talk about children going to school hungry, and we're losing state and federal funds to the amount of $132 million, not to mention the local revenue loss of $151 million, my concern, and I'm sure the board member's concern, is how are we going to feed our children? We know that the summer bucks, that also was not, that the federal funds were taken away for the summer meals. So I'm looking, as we all are, on how are we going to mitigate the emptying of not only our food pantries, because we met with Feeding Tampa Bay, and they're already in a, in a dire situation with the farm, the fresh foods are low, and there's just a, a lot of problems generating from state, local, money's being subtracted. Now, what, the question I'm asking, and I'm sure you're sympathetic, so that's a, you know, I don't mean to get on your moral compass, but what I wanted to ask is, can we use the fund balance if we get in a situation where we do not have free breakfast, free and reduced lunch? And you don't have to answer that now, but I want to put it on the radar, because I am very concerned that in 2028, the SNAP benefits will be cut. And I'm seeing this as a, a warning shot, how are we going to feed our children? That's really where this is coming from. Mr. Farkas?
And there are a lot of questions still out there. I appreciate the question. We've spent a lot of time looking at the specificity around what they're cutting. So SNAP benefits, as the board knows, are for the home, that, of the eligible families, but we use it for direct certification. Direct certification means that for our CEP schools, community eligibility schools, we have 198 of those, which means 198 of our schools get free breakfast and free lunch every single day. They don't have to put in lunch numbers, it's done. The rest of them, they can still get free and reduced lunch, but they have to do an application process. To your point, in the years of when you have it, this year, we will, we don't anticipate seeing an impact at all. The CEP numbers have not changed as far as the federal government to this point, which means the same number of schools will be on that. If the schools that aren't CEP, they'll still have to apply. But we're very cognizant and watching with a very close eye, what does that look like next year? If someone drops off of the SNAP benefit and they aren't direct certified, that'll impact our numbers and our percentages for our CEP schools. So at that point, we, we're already working behind the scenes with Jamie's team too. Then we're going to have to push a lot harder for families to do a lot of their applications, to make sure they do that and get back... to make sure they do that and get back on the old way of doing things, to, to do the free and reduced lunch. That is a challenge, uh, because that also comes with, um, income certifications and things like that that are, that are our next steps and things we'll have to do. Um, Ms. Hall, as you guys know, is a rock star. We've already talked about, what does that look like for ours? How do we do that? What kind of staff does student nutrition need to build up to do that? Obviously, not now. But when we, when we get to that point, if we get to that point, what does that look like? So I want to make sure that the community knows, the board knows, for this coming up year, and once you're direct certified, it's direct certified the entire year. So for the schools that were on CEP last year, the school, the kids that are going to be doing that same thing, they don't need to worry. They're going to be okay this year as we go forward with free breakfast and free lunch at our schools. We want to increase participation in breakfast. We want kids to come and get breakfast, as we always do. Um, but they're going to be okay. But we do need to keep a clean eye on that and make sure that we know if those SNAP benefits are there and they're not direct certified, there will be an impact to percentages and how we do our CEP, uh, uh, numbers. So we work closely with Jamie's team to what that looks like, actually with Tanya Arge's team in communications, because we're going to need a campaign. Um, since COVID, people haven't had to fill a lot of those out very often. So they're going to have to go back to five, six years ago. And if it doesn't happen till next year, seven years ago, to do those applications. So you'll see us push real hard. You'll see a lot of communication around that. But I want to make sure the community and the board knows that as far as this year in student nutrition and kids getting free breakfast and lunch, it will be the same as it was this past year.
You know, I really appreciate, uh, not only your heartfelt response, but our response as a district. Because if they, I don't have to tell you, if children are hungry, they will not learn. But there's other factors. Families are also going to be without meals. I'm meeting with some of the House Representatives, Feeding Tampa Bay and Shaney also, for some backup feeding plans. But, um, but it, it is on our mind. Um, and my last question, uh, and this has come to you, uh, Mr. Lewis. Um, when we look at the grant programs, Title I, Title II, Title III, the ELL, um, Title IV, Title IV Part A, not adult education, they're safe. Um, but we're looking at Title I, the migrant, $2 million reduced. Title II, Part A, professional development, $8 million lost. Title III, ELL, 26,000 students, we're looking at a minus $3 million. Title IV, tech and literacy, we're looking at a $7 million loss. Title IV, Part A, student support and academic development, minus 7.2 million. So the question, uh, if there is going to be a succinct question, it is going to be how, because our fund balance is, you know, it's comfortable, and I'm glad it is. You know, we know, we've had a great discussion. The board members, um, are very much for a healthy fund balance, maybe one or two not, but nonetheless, will we be able to use our fund balance if some of these situations come up, which they will, I do believe?
Mr. Lewis, I'll, I'll start and you can finish. So just, um, Member Gray, right before this meeting at 1:00, I did get a, we got a memo from all district superintendents, got a memo from the DOE. And I just want to kind of highlight what that is. Right before 1:00, but it's what is you're referencing. Um, and basically, the U.S. Department of Education has advised all states that it's reviewing funding for the 2526 school year. So I don't want to, they are reviewing it, so they've not released those. Um, however, it's not that those, uh, funds have been withheld or we're not receiving them. They're just reviewing the funding for the 2526 school year. So the team is, you know, team is working, you're working behind the scenes. The numbers you mentioned, that's the team working. All the funds that are, that are associated with those, um, with those titles, um, you know, are being reviewed right now. But I just, we just got that information, all that, um, Ms. Davis had, had provided to the board all through the, all through the Fourth of July week around what you're hearing. We did get that moment today. But I wanted to be clear that it's, it's that they're reviewing the funding, holding it back from all the states. Um, and, you know, as soon as we, you know, find out more information. I do want to note that this funding that we receive, typically, we don't receive this funding until, if I'm right, Ms. Brown, September, October, that we would receive this anyway, correct?
Typically around October, sometimes November.
There you go. So that's the time we would receive it normally anyway. So right, as at this point, nothing has really changed financially for us in September, October is when we normally, uh, would receive those funds. Because, like, Mr. Lewis, their, their fiscal year is a little bit different, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
I, I would add on to that too. There's a conference call that myself, the superintendent, and Ms. Brown will be attending on Thursday that has been set up for districts to get more clarity on this. I think the, the one thing that we're facing is it was just released. We're trying to understand it a little bit more. And I think the emphasis right now is they did not say we will not get the funding. This is a, this is a review. They're temporary frozen. I think that word has been utilized out there. It, this, we want to emphasize that this is not, they have not said we are not getting this funding. Uh, but in light of that, because that could happen, uh, the team is already building contingency plans. Uh, we've talked about it several times. Uh, myself and Ms. Brown are already working very closely about what that can be, and our teams are already communicating about that. So we're building a plan in case it does happen. Our hope is that it does not. Um, but we also have opportunities where we can overcome it if need be.
You know, this is a very important question and a very important response that both of you have given. Because now how I feel is more comforted. If I were a constituent worried about where, how is my child going to be fed in the morning? Or how are we going to handle the Title I absence, da, da, da? You know, these are real questions that are out there. And it's very good that you're staying on top of it, and we should address it at various board meetings. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm done with my questions.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, when I reviewed exactly how this is going to impact our specific district, um, and by the way, I have also reached out to all of our federal legislators, Mr. Scott's office and, and et cetera, Ms., Buchanan's office, Lee's office, Moody's office, um, and Casper's, uh, yeah, Castor's office, um, all of which they have been educated and informed of exactly that impact if the hold was not released, how that would directly impact our students. Um, may I clarify? I don't see anywhere in the information that's regarding our students that we're not going to be able to feed students. None of this, none of the holds have anything to do with our meal plans at all, correct?
That is correct. Not, not for the items just released to us. That's a separate thing that's been an ongoing thing for most of the year.
Correct. And there is, there is discussion on the potential for any SNAP benefits or any free and reduced lunch that it's not going to be removed but could fluctuate on the eligibility based upon income and that we will now have to verify more than we have in the past.
Yes, that's part of it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I, I want to make sure that we understand that because I also want to commend this district. We do an excellent job in making sure that we're utilizing the funds we're given for the correct reasons. So when an entity, a government entity, wants to review what we've spent the money on, we have clear evidence, am I correct, Superintendent, of exactly how we've spent the money that we were provided through these title dollars, correct?
That is correct.
And we've reviewed both legally and through our grants department that we have verified that money has been spent properly before ever approved.
Yes, ma'am, Member Rendon. That is correct.
Because part of the reason is the hold is so that they're reviewing districts across the country, making sure that we're utilizing the funds as they were required to be used. So I want to reassure the public that this district goes through painstaking awareness to make sure we spend the money according to the rules and guidelines that are given to us when we receive it.
You are absolutely correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure we clarify that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Member Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So back in, who can I ask this question to? Back in 2023, after COVID, um, there, it was a requirement to reapply for Medicaid and SNAP, right? In 2019?
Prior to COVID.
Right. So, um, and now, again, there's some Medicaid, um, renewal issues, um, especially because a lot of families have moved and are asking, and the SNAP benefits as well. Because under Medicaid is your SNAP benefits. So, so they're redoing the eligibility, right, with the families? So with regard to, um, Superintendent, with regard to our social workers, they're assisting the families, am I correct? We have some amazing social workers here in this district who assist families to apply for their Medicaid and SNAP benefits when they come into the schools, when they notice that, um, they're, the students are low-income students. Am I correct? Or have no medical insurance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that, that helps to, um, ensure that those SNAP benefits are being addressed. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, um, so on a daily, we're ensuring that our students are, um, that we're addressing those, those SNAP benefits for not just our students, but their families, but also for this district.
Correct.
And, and ensuring that those students are eligible. Okay, all right. I just want clarity on that. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Member Perez. Dr. Hahn?
Uh, thank you, Chair Vaughn. Um, so I've just, um, you know, since we're talking about this email on federal funding, um, you know, uh, just looking at this, I, I'm thinking about building our, I don't know where Ms. Davis is, if she's here, but building our legislative platform, and we should be doing that now. Now. Um, and the federal piece, you know, um, the biggest hit we would take is with Title II. And I would, I would suggest maybe we think about putting something like that on our federal platform. Um, because, you know, that is really around, um, it's around professional development. It's around teacher training. It's around new teacher support. It's around leadership development. And we can tie that to a bigger picture around building a teacher pipeline. And that is something that we, you know, every district is struggling to do right now. So, you know, you can galvanize the, the, the support of those districts and have a lot of leverage around that specific, um, uh, you know, item. Um, so just something to think about because, um, you know, it, I think it's important when you talk to federal, and I, I, when I was at USF, I used to go up to DC, um, once or twice a year to specifically talk about Title II cuts, actually, uh, or increasing Title II funding, if not cut, if, if it wasn't being cut. Um, and we would always talk about it within the context of the importance of having strong teacher pipelines. And, you know, obviously, USF College of Ed, that was the business we were into, developing teacher pipelines. So, um, I, I just think it's important when, you know, if we do build out a federal platform that we can tie it to, um, some big picture, you know, issue in the district. Um, and so it's just something I think that my colleagues and I, you know, should think about when we're starting to build that platform this summer, um, if there's some of these things that we want to tackle. Um, obviously, all of them is, you know, probably a lot. But I think, um, if you can tie it to something that's more big picture, uh, you'll capture the attention of not just, um, the federal legislators, but also, um, you know, other superintendents can jump on board and, and maybe add that to their platforms as well and get some traction. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hahn. Um, I realize that this is not the agenda item in specifics that we're talking about, but I do think it's a good avenue. This feels so loud. I'm going to pull it down lower. I feel like I'm booming back there. Um, I do think it is important. There is so much anxiety around headlines coming around federal funding, state funding. Honestly, Member Gray, I appreciate you're consistently asking about it and getting clarity around it. Um, it's not like you're just pulling this out of thin air. These are real headlines that permeate on almost every single news site and, again, cause so much chaos and confusion. So I appreciate the conversation, even if it's not about this agenda item that lends itself to us having discussions and clarity. And while we're talking about these federal funds and getting clarity around these federal funds, I don't feel like we're spending enough time talking about the ones that we do have answers on that are around the state funds. And I just want to go back to our quarters of what we're talking about. How much did we lose of quarter three? Can you remind me of the total? Was it 19 million? What was the total taken?
Total was 18.3 or around there, million.
Okay, $18.3 million.
Around that.
And then, so when we're talking about four, that we've been anxiously waiting on with almost no guidance, and yet, once again, we have to build a budget. We have people coming, begging us, talking about finishing negotiation. But when legislation finishes late and we don't get a budget passed until three months later, being able to go to the table to negotiate is a challenge when we have money literally plucked out of the budget that we were expecting to come. So how much are we talking about, or again, are we hoping for quarter four?
At this point, we're, that's, that's the, that's the challenge, right? And so we're hoping that our, our FTEs did rebound a little bit, and we're hoping that that translates there because a lot of our, uh, so we have some summer classes that are involved in that calculation or that survey and also, uh, completions of our HVS program. Um, we don't know if they'll do another adjustment to the appropriation, which I think is the major concern. And that is the area that, uh, obviously, a healthy fund balance can help us overcome if it is a challenge. Um, but until we know that, that really is holding up a lot of things to know just how we finish the year. And, and that obviously leads into what things or flexibilities we can do for the next year.
And speaking of next year, so, so you, you didn't give me a number. I know it's, we're not sure. But in your mind, if you had to pull a number from $1,000 to $47 million, what are you hoping for as far as the ballpark is concerned?
Zero impact. That's my hope.
But, okay. But you, I thought you were hoping to gain some money from that.
I think, I think at this point, we, we would hope to rebound, but from the best-case scenario, I think, for the district is that we're not impacted on the fourth calculation because of potential, uh, other things that could occur.
So just to clarify, we thought we were getting $19 million more on three. That was taken away. We were hoping to rebound with quarter four, but now our best hope is not to have more money taken out. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we're looking at a $20 million deficit just this year. Now, we haven't even talked about, we've, we've kind of talked about what federal funding could look like. I'm glad Member Gray brought that up and we clarified it. But the original figures that Kristin sent to us from our lobbyists, our federal lobbyists, were $24 million, broken down into the category that Member Gray highlighted legislatively. With just the changes from last year's budget, what are we looking at as far as a deduction of revenue in next year's budget?
That's a very good question. I don't know if I have the numbers for it right now.
I know we talked anywhere from 14 to $47 million of a reduction, depending what passed in the House and what passed in the Senate. Do we have any idea of what that's going to look like yet?
I think, Mr. Lewis, what she's referring to is, is there was a 1.59% increase in per-student funding that the governor signed. The base student allocation only increased by 0.78%, which we know that's the lowest-
And there were other categoricals that they collapsed and took away.
So based on that, forgetting-
A loss of funding.
Yeah. I think right now, we are still digging through all that. The overall, I know you want an exact answer, and I'm not prepared to answer that. We can definitely get back to the board on that question. I think that, that right now, what we do know is a couple of things. The BSA did have an increase. Um, it, obviously, not as much as we had hoped and not as much as we've seen in the last six years. Um, you got to be careful with that number[1676.05] You gotta be careful with that number because, as you mentioned, every year, they can pull stuff out of that, what's in the BSA and categoricals, and then put stuff in, so it's not as clear as you can see the percentage every year. But we did notice, we did see an increase there. Better than one proposal, worse than the other, but we did see an increase, and I think that's important. As we move forward, I think the one thing that we're going to monitor is, what are the other things, as you mentioned, that are impacted? The good news is property values, the initial information that we have from property appraisers, the values did go up. The whole year, we were being told that maybe they would not, and so that's a good news that will, that would translate.
But we're still capped on those.
We are. And so we'll get clarification on that later this month, but at least we didn't see a decrease, a decrease in values. And so that's another positive thing that's gonna help that and the referendum as far as covering that cost. Additionally, we saw other things that did happen, and that will help us to address some of the challenges. We also have made, we have done things to mitigate the budget, and so we've made some budget reductions that we'll explain at the future board meeting. We have been able to reduce district vacancies, which will allow to a direct savings, and so the district has done a number of things to try to recoup that, and I'll mention that some of those things will translate into the 25 budget. And so, to your point earlier, what are we gonna do when we see an $18 million decrease in our funding in calculation three? The district took that very seriously, and we made adjustments throughout the rest of the spring and headed into the month of June, where we able to recoup a lot of that, if not all of it. And so we're still working and closing out the year to see where our final numbers are, but we just wanted to make a mention that that is something that we took not lightly, and we worked really hard at trying to recoup that because it's not a guarantee, as you just mentioned, that we can receive that, those fundings back in a rebounded fourth calculation. And so we were able to make strides there, especially at the district level, and then that's also gonna help us transition into next year, because if we're able to reduce our budgets next year, then we can, we can do that in the following year.
So, a couple more questions, and I appreciate these very lengthy answers, is, was the reductions we made directly tied to unit allocations? When you're talking about rebounding, that means cutting people out of our schools?
No, the decreases that have been made have been at the district level so far. And so, units were based off of, at schools, based on the formula, and I can say that we have went above that, listening to the needs of each school and trying to address that. I'll mention, too, that's not just a CFO or an HR decision, that is a cabinet decision that we meet on a weekly basis to review all those needs. Regional superintendents were helping us this year, we bought, I know, I understand that that's-
That's a whole other conversation, we could get into that for five hours, but I'll take your answer that we've had to reduce district staff. But it does result in a reduction of staff, regardless of whether it's school-based, or whether it's, when we're talking about how we've mitigated the loss of revenue, we've talked about a deduction of staff. A district level, wherever, we're operating with less people, that's correct?
We'll have, yes, well, there were vacancies, then so we'll have, we won't fill those roles that were currently vacant. So just want to clarify, no one lost their job, but we were able to remove positions that were vacant, and that we were able to, then that will realize a savings.
I appreciate the clarity. We don't want people thinking that they're losing their jobs, we've done very good as a district. I agree with Member Rendon, we went through those pains years ago, but those are less available jobs that support people in our district, period. Whether somebody lost them or not, the way that we're mitigating the constant taking away of the money that we've earned, correct? This is not money that we haven't earned, it's money that we've earned is by reducing the number of vacancies in this district.
One measure that we are taking.
Yes, okay, I appreciate that. And one last question, because I can tell Member Rendon's dying to get back in the queue, is, with us going into a new year, whether it's federally, whether it's because of the legislation budget, whether it's because of, from my understanding, and I could be wrong, the reason the money was taken back that we earned is because vouchers were overfunded, from what the state is saying, is, are we gonna get in front of our families, and that, is that not true?
We asked for clarification from the state, and that's not the answer they gave us.
Well, that's the answer that I'm getting from people who work with our lobbyists, but, okay. So we're not getting any clarity on why the money's being taken back?
They gave us clarity that they just adjusted the appropriation because of the state budget for education was in need of that assistance. It was not directly tied to one thing or the other, they just announced that it was the state overall budget.
Because I've heard by almost $247 million vouchers were overfunded, so I would like to get clarity on that. There should be record, there should be accountability if we're overfunding them. But are we gonna get in front of families to let them know if we head into the next year in a $50 million deficit due to legislative and federal changes? Is that something we're gonna be clear about, so our community doesn't think that we are evil school board member who are guarding money and refusing to pass it on to our families and to our schools? Are we gonna be crystal clear about where the changes are coming from?
So we always want to communicate out to our families the situation we're in. Right now, we're in a place that the funding has been withheld, has not been taken away, so we're, and like I mentioned earlier, we usually don't, on the federal side, we don't-
Yeah.
Yeah, well federally, and then, which is a piece-
$18 million, what?
$18 million, in 18 million. So calc, the calculate, if you look at survey two and calculation three, the calc three is taken into account based on our, based on our numbers of students that we have for that particular survey period, so just a calculation it does.
Anyway, I've gone well over my time, I don't want to abuse my time as chair. Member Combs, you're in the queue next.
If I could just make a comment, too, because you alluded to this, Madam Chair, the board can talk about whatever it wants, this is an agenda item to just set the budget public hearing? You've gone way into a lot of substantive questions, which I understand, and the chair has allowed it, but staff isn't probably fully prepared to answer all your questions. And I think these are great questions, and you can ask them if you like, but be, there's an agenda item that you're voting for to, approval to advertise a tentative budget, and you can ask those questions now.
I appreciate it.
You might not get all the answers you need, so I just want to provide some clarity for the board and the public around what you're actually voting on right now.
Trying to reel me back in over there, Mr. Porter? Thank you. Member Combs?
Well, I have to say that I appreciate the, being so informative, Chair Vaughn. I think one of the most important jobs as school board members is to inform our public and to be advocates, and to make sure that they know, you know, as representing school board members, we want to make sure we let the public know what's happening with funding. I mean, so when you're looking at, we're 50th in the nation funded right now in education, and the increase is $41.62. So that is going to keep us at the 50th. Am I correct or not?
It's the lowest increase, probably, it's the lowest increase you've had in the last six years, so that would make that assumption, yes.
Yes, and I've looked at other states, what's happening, it's a larger, larger gap, so you're looking at states like Kentucky, West Virginia, all these states that are so much less expensive to live in, to shop in, for insurance, so those schools, those states are paying more than Florida. And so that's a fact, we just have to let people know. And so, and it also has the highest vacancies, so when a parent says, when that child came in today and said, "I haven't had an English teacher for six months," it's, guess what? Mainly probably because you're not being able to pay your teachers. When we have vacancies right now, 529 teachers as of, I think, or whatever it was, in the 500 range, it's because of the salaries. That's why people are not going into education. So I guess one of the questions for me is, that third, or that fourth calculation of $47 million, we should have it now, and we would be drawing interest in that, right? We could be investing it, we could get interest in it. So who's making the money on the backs of that $47 million? That money that is not, that should have been here, when should it have arrived here?
Well, the $47 million is, was the money, shortfall for the entire state of Florida.
That's, oh, I'm talking about the fourth calculation, when should it have arrived?
Calculations just released late April, early May.
Late April and early May, and when, what was the amount that you anticipated?
I'm not prepared to answer that.
Okay, okay. But whatever it is, you usually would have made interest in that, right?
Yes, ma'am, if you-
Or you would have invested in that. So not only are we not waiting for the money, we also could be investing in that, and we could be making money off that. So the money that we earn, that we could be investing, or we should be making money off that, we're losing that. So that's important for the public to know, too. Not only are we not getting the calculation, we are also losing money because we could be investing that, we could also be earning interest in that. So instead, the state is earning interest on all these districts around the state because they're holding on to that money, and every day, they're making interest on that. Is that correct?
Yes, if it was a positive, and we had more money, we could have, you would normally invest.
Yeah. I mean, it's so, so critically important, and so not only are we possibly losing money from the federal government, we don't know, we hope so, we hope it doesn't happen, but it's happening at the local level, too. So people really need to be informed. You know, generally, 80% of students, 80% of our population goes to public schools. Our enrollment, look at our grades, look at our scores, compare it to other districts, other charter schools, we're doing really well. So students are coming back to our schools, but we are just not funding them. So I really appreciate, Chair Vaughn, I really appreciate you discussing that. Also, Member Gray, always bringing this up, because at the end of the day, our job is not just to make sure we run a district, our job is also to inform the public that, you know, even if you don't have children, the other day, I said this, when you see kids running around in the streets, even if you don't have children, that's gonna impact you if they're not getting an education. It's gonna impact you if you're gonna have to pay for somebody for social welfare, or if it's gonna impact crime rates, or it's gonna impact, you know, our community in a lot of different ways. Education is so, so important, and to be funded 50th with the inflation rate so high, and to offer me $41 per child increase when every single, every single contract is 10% to 20% is just ridiculous, and it's just, it's just really, really sad. And I hope, as I see the newspapers here and the, and, you know, media, they talk about the importance of education and what's happening at Florida. And so when you see other things, like all these scores and all these grades, people are working very hard. But when you look at measurement, how does that happen, that every district on every level increase scores, okay? But you're funding it less. I mean, we really, really need to make sure we're fighting and being informed voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I, and I do agree, we always want to make sure that our public schools and our schools in general throughout the education in the state of Florida becomes a priority, and I 100% believe in advocating for that. But I do want to have some clarity, and Mr. Lewis, Ms. Garcia may want to comment on this, as we go through the different calcs throughout the year, there are two calcs in which we will receive payment on. Then there is a fifth calc that will sure up what happens through the full year, and where things were not added up correctly, or we get information, and that comes in in September, when it shores up the end of the year. So although we did not get the full calculation for third count, we may get that back when they do the full sum of it. Because that happens every year, where they pay us based upon predictions, and then they actually firm it up at the September payment of what their prediction, am I, am I not, am I correct?
Yes, there's a fifth calculation that-
Okay, sure.
That also captures some summer activity.
Correct. So even though each payment may be off, and part of, we've discussed the fact that as a district, we're going to get better in making sure we know what we're billing, that's our first thing we're gonna work on. Two, we're gonna make sure we know what our expectation of receiving, and then we want to make sure by the end of that fifth calc, we have received full payment for the year. Because that's where sometimes, it's not the first time this has happened where we did not get a partial payment, am I correct? Long before this year.
I would assume so.
There were times previously that we did not, and it calculated back in the fifth calc?
That's the purpose of having all the calculations, it builds on top of each other, in case one, something happens and there's another one, but the fifth one that happens the fall after the fiscal years is the true opportunity.
So I want to make sure that we appreciate you keeping track of where we should be, so we make sure that fifth calculation does bring back us to fruition of what we're supposed to receive. That's the first thing, right? Am I right?
You're right, and we will actually see it in the next fiscal year, so whatever they-
Correct.
-do up in the fifth calculation, we'll see it in '25, '26.
And this is not an uncommon precedence over the years?
It happens every year.
Okay. I think that's, because, again, I don't disagree with Member Vaughn or Member Combs that our funding is a priority, and it's important, but I want to make sure this is not unusual of what's happening this year. But Mr. Lewis is on top of knowing in detail more than we've had in the past. Am I correct?
We're working on it.
Yeah. I'm just saying, because it is different, and I mean, I think that's, it's a good thing that you're on top of knowing where we're short when.
I will say, that's the emphasis of the finance and the IT team, is that we have active conversations about FTE nonstop.
Okay. The other thing is, I want to make sure that when we talk about property taxes, there is an element, when it goes into the local tax, that is shared statewide, but part of the reason is, when we talk about being a student-rich, property-poor district, and Manatee or Sarasota, per se, is a property-rich, student-poor district, it is because there are other parts, certain millages that are in property taxes are not capped, that go towards the schools in their district. There's only a specific type of tax within that, for our schools, that does get taxed when they're higher than they need.
And that's, so the FEFP on the operating side equalizes it out that way, and we talked about it previously, it equalizes so property-rich school districts don't have advantage over property-poor school districts. The one that you're referring to, for the FEFP, the one you're referring to is the capital. The 1.5 mils that we generate in capital, depending how property-rich we are or not, depends how much money we are then going to receive. But the operating side on the FEFP, that's where it gets equalized, that's why at our next, back to this agenda item, that's why at the budget meeting that we'll say, we'll talk about what our actual millage rate is, you'll see over time, the millage rate has dropped over time, because it's-
From 7.9 to 5.4, till last year, we went back to 6.4. So we are less than we were, our property taxes are less than they were in 2012, when it was 7.9, and it's 6.4 today.
That is correct.
And that, it's very clear that it is reduced over time.
Yes, and that'll be at the September budget meeting, where we announce the millage rate and what it is, and we'll go that into detail of what that millage rate is. But you're correct, it's the capital one that is not capped, it's based on what you, what you earn, the right, the other side of the millage is equalized through the FEFP.
Which is why districts like Sarasota is going to, they do get more money for, in their property taxes because of the value of the properties.
For capital, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, I just want to make sure that, like, because we, there is an element that we will receive more when property values go up.
Notice on the next agenda item on the calendar, which has some of those dates of when we receive some of those final notifications.
Thank you very much.
All right, back to me. I have a lot more to say, but the lawyer is giving me the eye, that this is not the time and the place to say it, so I just have one question, even though I have 14 more after that conversation, is, while we true up every year and five, the fact that the 19 was taken because the DOE has overspent, regardless of whatever they want to say, is unprecedented.
Yes, but just, just to clarify for the record, the 18 was a combination of a lot of things. I don't have those exact figures in front of me right now, but a portion of it, to Member Rendon's point a minute ago, part of that was an adjustment that was calculated from that last calculation we just talked about. So remember, a calculation occurs in October, and then they had to add that impact to a calculation, so part of the third calc was an impact from the previous year.
I remember, I remember how it broke down.
Part of it was from FTE, and that was just more of a, we hope, a timing issue, and then the other one's an adjustment to the appropriation, and we can get those-
Appropriation is unprecedented.
Yes.
Yes.
In the wall, that can happen.
The only question I have, I'm ending it now, Mr. Porter. I'm en, anybody else have any discuss, okay. Seeing that there's no further discussion, discussions or comments, please vote when your light appears.
Mr. Lewis has another item still to go, though.
And the motion passes unanimously. And the next item, 602, proposed calendar for the adoption of the fiscal year '25, '26 budget. Mr. Lewis, Chief Financial Officer, will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I hope this is the much faster of an agenda item, but 6.01 is the approval of the calendar, I'm sorry, 602 is approval of the calendar for the adoption of the fiscal year budget. This is the annual calendar that we go through in the months of between June and September, and it has all the dates, and most of those are determined by statute. So this is the game plan that we'll have over the next couple of months as we get the budget finalized for the fiscal year '26.
Okay. I need a motion and a second to approve C-602. I have a motion by Member Combs, and a second by Member Rendon. I pulled this item, but I don't have any questions. You guys are welcome. Does anyone else have any questions, or questions are common? Seeing none, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on to 701, multiple piggyback agreements for science equipment supplies and services. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am, and I'll be brief with this one. This board item seeks approval for the purchase, this is science equipment supplies and related services throughout the district. You'll notice with our new high school 20, opening up in the fall, the increased cost of the new purchase of science equipment over at Morgan that'll open up in a month and a half now. Mr. Farkas, anything I missed there?
No, I just want to point out, the reason you haven't seen this historically, is because there's nine different items that we buy science that never reaches a $50,000 threshold, that we buy in the science department and Mr. Brady's group buys from, but because we're open in the Career Center and Morgan, that is why we're reaching that million-dollar threshold, there's the two schools that are open. So, were we seeing this item because of Mr. Brady, I just wanted to make sure, point that out.
Ready for a motion? Okay, I need a motion and a second to approve C-701. I have a motion by Member Rendon, and a second by Member Combs. I pulled this item, but I'm not gonna ask any questions on this one either. Member Gray? Okay. So seeing that there are no questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear. And the item passed unanimously. All right, we will now move on to the superintendent comments. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, my comments this evening, I know we've had some discussion over the last, it's been a, a lot of information has come in from the state, also college board over the last that we've inundated you with, so I just want to take an opportunity to go through that right now. Before I do that, I do want, uh, yeah. Hello. There it goes. First off, that our, our school choice and magnet window, our final one, July 7th through 13th, so we've had two application periods, as you all know, this is our final one, our third one is July 7th through the 13th. Yeah, hit it again, it's not working. Yeah, hit it again, it's not working. So just, just with continuing the momentum, like as I mentioned, Department of Education released the school grades yesterday, and I want to take an opportunity to go over some, some impressive results that, that, that the team, that all of our staff members, teachers, leaders, you know, if you look at, at, at what affects student achievement, it always starts with the classroom teacher, and then besides the classroom teacher, it's, it's a supportive environment, staff that support teachers, and number two is always the school leader. And then for, you know, as we sit here today, it's the environment that we create, you know, as board members, superintendent staff, to create conditions so our schools can go out and do their great work, which they, they truly have. So just to kind of set, set the stage here, so the 24, 25 school grades were released, and I do want to make note of the year, so of the things that have, that have happened throughout this year, that, that we've, you know, we've had some struggles this year, starting with synergy in the student information system implementation. Right after that, we had 11 days, we missed the most days in the state of Florida with hurricane days, we missed 11, and everyone else was missing just a few less, 9, 10, but two hurricanes, 11 days of missed instruction. And as we look at the results that came in, it's truly, truly remarkable. And I want to remind this board that two years ago, two years ago in June, when the state released their grades, there was two things that were a priority. We had 29 Ds and four Fs, and had the most Ds and Fs in the, in the state of Florida. All right? That was two years ago. That is no longer the case. There is no longer, this Hillsborough County have the most DNF in the state of Florida. And I want to commend all of our, all of our teachers, staff members, this entire organization, all the work to get to this, to get to this point today. So some of the highlights I want to, I want to talk through, we increased the number of As from 63 to 70, and you can see, see some of the schools there that are listed, I won't name them all, we see Turner Bartels, Jervon, your school off the top there, improving from a B to an A. Strawberry Crest was another one that improved, Gaither, as I mentioned earlier, you saw Smith Middle School. And I will tell you, board members, I spent most of the morning today on the phone constantly with both principals, and just to hear the excitement in their voice for all of the, all the work that our schools did this particular year, you know, it, it was, it was pretty remarkable to see how, how important this work is to them and everything that they've, they've achieved. So you can see increased the number of As from 63 to 70, increased the number of Bs from 40 to 44. You can see this, those 18 schools that improved their grade from that important C category to a B. And as we mentioned earlier, I think what's important to note, because it was such a big deal two years ago, was the number of Ds and Fs, which we've reduced that number from 29 Ds and four Fs to now no Fs and five, and, and five Ds, that we worked towards next year to bring that number to zero. But if you look at a number from 33 to five in a two-year time period, goes to the work that's happening, that, board members, that you, you know, over agenda items which you approve, setting conditions here, that then allows our employees to go out and do truly remarkable work. With all that, we've sat here and talked about all of the, you know, what we've had to overcome, and I didn't even mention the number of vacancies we've had. Right? So you talk about the results we've achieved with, you know, opening the year with, you know, 400 instructional vacancies in classroom, you see all the hard work that our, that our teachers put in, but extremely, extremely excited about this number, this reduction, increase of As and Bs, reduction in the number of Ds, looked at that, get that number to zero, but, you know, no longer even being closed. If you look at districts across the state with Ds and Fs, Hillsborough County is nowhere on that map, and that's something to be proud of. Also want to mention our school improvement ratings, and these are schools that don't receive a school grade because they don't have enough students to receive a grade. And I think that number was 120, I think is the number, something like that, to ask Deidra. But you can see that they receive, our Medical Academy at DW, Simmons in South County received their, the highest rating of commendable there. Just some other assessment results, you can see similar to, for grades three through 10, the increase from PM1 to PM2. This is no comparison to others, just so you can see where our students came in with, with the number of vacancies, with the number of days we missed. You know, if you look at English Language Arts, grades three to 10, and we, the state put us in this progress monitoring system, allows us to progress monitor throughout the year. So you can see in PM1, which is in September, where 34% of our students are proficient, and a 20% increase over, over the year in, in English Language Arts. Of course, you'll see math as well. Of course, math are going to start lower because it tests on end-of-year skills. So you see math at 13% and a 42% increase up to 55%. Some other ones that I think that we want to particularly be proud of, you know, if you look at, you have student grades, which has students that are in both survey periods. This right here for spring assessment results, this is all testers. So one that, that this board has made a priority around reading and proficiency. Look at our increase in even comparison to state, if you look at grades three through five proficiency, which we all have talked about the importance of our early, of our early grades. We had a three percentage points increase in grades three through five here in our district. You see our science numbers, a lot of our, our school grades around science were improved, particularly to our improvement in science of 3%. You see algebra, geometry, and then US history had a huge 5% increase. I just wanted to highlight some of those, but know, we can look at data all day long. Our, our third grade, as, as you mentioned before, as we've talked about before, was a 2% increase in third grade, but three through five, a 3% increase. That is, I want to thank our academic services team, our entire staff, elementary principals, teachers, staff members that help support that. These gains just don't happen by accident, they happen because of hard work, and the extremely talented workers, teachers, every staff member in Hillsborough County are the result, are the reason we see the results that we did. So I just want to, want to thank them, and we'll spend some time celebrating with our principals at our joint principal meeting, that of course, board members, you'll all be at July 20, 24th. So while all that was going on, that morning of school grades, this was Monday, we had all our advanced placement results came in. So I do want to spend a minute, I know, board members, you know this because I've spoken to each of you, but we saw another 4% increase. So if you remember last year, we had a 66% pass rate, that number jumped to 70%. So if you look at where we've come from since 2022, over the last three years, we are talking a 70% pass rate. Let me be clear, this is every student that sat down and took the test, 70% of them made a score of three, four, or five. And if you look over the previous years, the tremendous growth that has happened in advanced placement on a national, national norm test of, of advanced placement, as we compare to others nationally, I will tell you, you know, you see, of course, a 17% increase since 2022, but you're talking, there were 27,764 exams given, over 19,000 of those students earned a three, four, or five, and you look at the numeric value there, the number of 14 million in potential savings for students as they move on to college. And we've had, you know, of course, Giselle Liniger Brown, who's here, who helps lead our advanced academics team, but it comes down, if you're looking at AP, all the prep happens at elementary and middle, and then our high schools really knocked it out of the park this year, all the way around. So really proud of that. We will receive our, you may be wondering about our ACE Cambridge, that'll be coming in, around August is when the ACE results will come in. But our advanced placement, you know, highest rate ever in the history of the school district to have a 70% pass rate. Say it again, the highest rate ever of, of AP pass rate, pretty remarkable of, of the work that our, that our teams are doing. And then at the same time, while that was happening, a few days before that, we had our IB results that have come in. And of course, members, you're, you're well aware of our IB pass rates and, and what that looks like. So just to summarize, we had 387 IB diplomas that were awarded to our seniors this year, 90% of the subject area exams, you see the 100% of the IB theory of knowledge and extended essay, and you can see some of our schools of the number of diplomas and the diploma rate for IB. So again, if you look at advanced academics and advanced placement, IB, and we'll still waiting for those ACE results. The amount of access to accelerated coursework in our, in our, in our high schools is absolutely remarkable, and what we offer, and thanks to this board for, you know, moving in the direction of ACE, and, you know, when we, you know, purchase AP exams, and all of the things that we do, that we, you know, we spend a lot of time in the business, but which allows our schools to be able to, to go and, and do this kind of great work. So, you know, I, I spend a lot of time on the phone, I'll do so again tomorrow with our principals, congratulating them. I know you as well have been texting and calling a lot of your schools, so appreciate that. They are very, very proud, each of them of their results. I'm extremely proud of them, this entire team and staff, to get us, to get us to this, to get us to this place. So that is it.
All right. Thank you for all of that. Oh, let me go back to my script where I read about board member comments. Sorry, I was unprepared. We will now move on to board member comments. Board members, just a reminder, you'll have five minutes each to speak with 30 seconds for final thoughts. And first in the queue, we have Member Gray.
Okay, here we go. Thanks to the successful passage of the Millage Referendum approved by an overwhelming 67% of voters last November, and our strong collaboration with the Hillsborough Classroom Teachers Association, Hillsborough School Employees Federation, and Hillsborough Association of School Administrators, we are proud to announce that we will begin implementing the Millage Referendum supplemental pay effective July 1st, 2025. A special thanks to CFO, our wonderful Jamie Lewis, who stood the test of time tonight, and our hard-as-hack financial guru, who's not here, Stephanie Heaton, but she is a wonderful partner with you, I know Jamie, and our taxpayers. Next, I have a video. Pablo, are we doing the video? Yeah, this is the one where our human trafficking panel, let's see, who, he's warming up. No, all right, that's fine, you can show this one.
Moving to the beat of the music, the children in this classroom aren't just dancing, but learning.
Yeah, this is from Melissa Macado and Jessica de la Prida team.
Run by the Hillsborough County School District. In this classroom, they're learning in Spanish, a language Carian Rivera says means a lot to her.
I can share my language first, my culture, and learn from them.
Rivera is a first-grade dual-language teacher. She says her experience in learning the English language is what motivated her to teach others.
I open the door for them to learn and just enjoy the time that we're here, and I see huge difference on them.
The children are also learning French.
Salud, besabí, como sabá.
And American Sign Language as part of the camp. Past studies have shown that in the US, about 20% of K through 12 students are enrolled in a world language. In European countries, that percentage is much higher. Veronica Schmidt-Gomez is the supervisor of worlds and dual languages with the school district. She says learning a second language is usually offered in high school, and this camp allows students to get ahead.
This is a critical time and a critical age for learning languages, and I think it's important to foster that. We, research has already shown that students who actually learn a second language have cognitive skills that are more advanced.
The camp is currently taking place at three schools in the county, primarily focused on students who attend 15 military-connected schools. While each class is different, students learn in a similar way.
One of the most important is our, like, body movement. We have to be using the, the body movement to calling their attention. Also pictures, anchor charts, repetition all the time.
Rivera says this camp will help bridge gaps in languages and connect more students to each other.
It's no limit for them.
Hey Pablo, let's go ahead and stop that.
Because for these students, education goes beyond the classroom.
Anyway, this is a testimonial to our multi-language, world language department, Melissa Macado, Jessica de la Prida, thanks to the Department, the DODIA grant, the Department Education Activity Grant, Department of Defense. This is the first and only world language summer immersion camp ever, and it's, it's, it's huge, hosted by Dawson Elementary, Fishhawk Creek Elementary, Rampella K through eight. And as you can see, the students were absolutely immersed in their various languages, Spanish, French, American Sign Language. So it was just a wonderful program. Next, we're going to go ahead into the Human Trafficking Committee. Thanks, Drucey Diaz, our chair. Do we have the photos? I can see me. Yeah. Our Human Trafficking Committee was in front of 47 states discussing, unfortunately, the idea of students, trafficking students. We gave them information on the various websites, the strategies for, and these are FBI agents from all over the country, strategies that they can use for their communities to help, to help be prepared, what it looks like to be groomed, what it looks like to have a school where kids are absolutely trying to traffic kids. So we have had a lot of success, thanks to Emmy Marie Granger Welch, Betsy Conley, FBI, thanks Betsy for putting this on, Sergeant Adam Daniels, Hillsborough County Sheriff Office, Drucey Diaz, our chair, Kate Popa, No More Foundation, and Valerie Bunt-Belford, and she's from the Children's Services. But we're getting around, and we'll be throughout the district, middle schools next district year. Thank you Superintendent Van Ayers for allowing us to have a very important impact on the safety and welfare of our children. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Got a lot in there. Good job. Thank you, Member Gray. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pablo, can we start the, so I had the honor to be able to go and see our FFA State Convention, which was pretty amazing. We had, the president of FFA State Convention is from Durant High School, and one of the officers was from Strawberry Crest. We had many of our schools participate and were award-winning. I would say we represented our district better than any other district in the state of Florida with all of the awards that we won. Durant had to actually have a wheelbarrow for all of their awards. I really want to commend all of our award winners and all of our schools for the hard work that they put in for the FFA and everything they learned from there. The speeches by the students were absolutely fantastic and amazing, and what they learned from FFA is just fantastic. Hope will be the president of FFA. She is a graduate of Strawberry Crest. One of her other vice presidents is from Durant High School again. So we will be representing the state FFA as they move forward in this next year, and so congratulations to them. Also, I had the distinct honor of going with Randall Middle School to Kennedy Space Center. They are one of only two middle schools to make it to the finals, and they have their experiment that will be going into space, and the patch that's written after them. They start off with nine different teams from Randall, and they narrowed it down to one, but they were one of only about 20 teams from across the world. Brazil had two teams, Portugal, several other teams from around the country, California, Pennsylvania, Ohio. Universities had teams, high schools had teams, and there were only two middle school teams that made it with the same caliber as these high school and college teams. So what a fantastic job, what a fantastic program that we did through Randall Middle School. So I want to make sure I give heads up to them, and they had an astronaut there that, that spoke to the kids and did a really great job. So congratulations to all of them. I want to congratulate all of our teachers, all of our administrators at all of our schools. We have a, it makes it easy for us to get up and say, you know, all of our school grades, but that is on the backs of all of your hard work. You have worked diligently, very specific in your task, and really put time, effort, and talent into each and every one of your students, and it is just absolutely fantastic to be able to represent you and the job that you do. You are the backbone of our district, and we cannot thank you enough. We may have many discussions on this board, but I guarantee you, every single board member knows that our schools are the backbone of this district, and we recognize you, we recognize you as employees, and we value every single day you put in there. And there's not, not a one of us that does not advocate for you whenever we have the opportunity, because we know that without you, we could not do what we do. And so just want to thank each and every one of you that are in our schools, that are dedicated to students of this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rendon.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also, I'd like to thank the wonderful principals, teachers, staff at the schools for doing a great job. What people don't realize, we had a difficult time in the last three years, and, and the last year, and, and we've done a great job working. And Shay, my, Ray, I want to tell you, thank you for what you do each and every day. That's, that's amazing how transformation schools have come through really, really good, really good, and the whole staff. Superintendent, we appreciate that, everyone, because it takes everyone, not one person, it takes everyone to, to work hard and, and be dedicated and, and do what you're supposed to do in order for the district to be successful. I tell you, in District Fire, I'm well pleased, because we have done a great job in District Fire. Two Ds. It's amazing. I haven't seen that in the last 13, 14 years. We always had two or three Fs in, in District Fire, two Ds, and we're going to get better than that. We're going to help not have none next year. So again, teachers and staff and everyone, custodian, because it takes everybody. You know, the custodian on You know, the custodian don't clean the room, hey, they don't learn. If we don't have dietitian feeding students, they're hungry. So everybody works together to make this a successful district, and we appreciate all that you've done. So our Hillsborough Schools FACE Team has been selected to present the National Association for Family, School, and Community Engagement Conference in New Orleans this fall. This conference brings together education professionals and advocates who are passionate about family engagement with over 100 sessions for people nationwide. Our FACE presentation will be spotlighted of a school's support framework and how to utilize family engagement for school improvement. The presenters are Dr. Phalia Lewis, Sandra Masassi, Quanet Williams, and William Bass. Congratulations to the FACE Team, and that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Washington. Member Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, Superintendent, I want to congratulate you. You know, I know, sitting on this board with a member, Dr. Hahn, and Member Gray, you know, we've seen this district struggle. We have seen some, just some struggles, and sitting here as board members trying to lift this district, and to see where we are today, it was just, you know, I was ecstatic to see these grades. But also, I want to thank your cabinet, you know, and Farcus and everyone for the way you lot, when I call, let me say this, it's so important to me, when there's a problem and I call and you answer your phone. You know, you answer your phone. That's because, you know, we have parents calling with real problems, and they're trying to correct these problems to lift their students. So when you answer your phones and you help these parents, that's where we get to these, you know, going from a D to an A, or going from a B to an A, or, you know, getting to 1F. You know, that's how we get here. So I want to thank you, but also the teachers, the principals, who keep those schools going, and the teachers who are in front of our students. Because I know it's not an easy task. I only have three kids and I just, you know, they're about to drive me drink. So I can't imagine a classroom full of just 15, you know, 15 students, but 15, 20, 25, 30 sometimes. But, you know, so, you know, I just want to thank, I just want to thank this district for what you're doing for our students. I have a question, I have two questions. With the new focus system transition on July 1, will the students be using the bus pass system?
You mean the RFID where they can... So no, we're going to make sure that they, the system works without flaws, and then we will implement that right after that. So there's a plan, and we'll work with Ms. Arjuna to make sure we communicate this. We're ready to go with that, but we didn't want to throw too much on schools, is the honest answer. We want to make sure they felt comfortable, that we got focus off the ground, but you can see that rollout that'll happen this fall for sure.
This fall. Okay, you'll let us know?
100%. You guys will be a part of that campaign. We'll have to do a press conference and the whole thing to kick it off and make sure we know. But yes, we'll share with the board.
Awesome. Because there's a few newspapers who are asking me and to, you know, release, do a press release, so they'll be, you know, there when you guys are doing your...
100%.
And also, really quick, with the bus drivers, what kind of cleaning equipment do we provide them to clean these buses?
Depends, so we have, you mean, outside the bus, we have a bus wash, inside equipment, they can check stuff out that we have at the site, so we should be able to supply all that stuff. If there's any individual needs they have or they're not being met, please tell them to reach out to Ms. Hill or myself so we can get it. But they have equipment at each one of their facilities that they can use to help do those buses.
And how often do we replenish those?
It should be always. If you're hearing that they've run out of something, please let us know, but that's not, there's not, there's, I don't want to say endless supply, but there should always be those cleaning supplies for buses.
Okay, because there is some concerns with the bus drivers to make sure that the start of the new year, there's the cleaning supplies for their buses.
I will follow up with it now, make sure they have those.
All right, and congratulations again.
Thank you, Member Perez. Dr. Hahn?
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. Congratulations. I was very excited when you shared this with me the other day, and, you know, I reached out to Shay and congratulated her, and I hope you share that with your team. It's a heavy lift, but you did a great job, and you need to take your victory lap. And what I mean by that is you need to get out there and share this information with the community, with the chambers of commerce, with the Rotary, with the Economic Club, because I can tell you, they're not watching us right now. But, you know, this is a direct correlation, this has a direct correlation with workforce development. This is the type of information that businesses need and elected leaders, the mayor needs to know this, so they can attract more businesses to the area when they know what a strong school district we have. This is an important message, and, you know, I think you need to take some time and share it in the next couple of weeks before it becomes, you know, old news. So take your victory lap, please. You know, and when I look at these numbers, I just want, and I think back to COVID, I want to thank Governor DeSantis for demanding that schools reopen, when so many, so many states around the country stayed closed for up to two years. Those kids will never close that gap. They just, it just is not going to be possible. And look at the great gains we've had, the gaps that we've closed in this district since then. So this is great, great, really great news. So, you know, I think all the schools in our district, you know, deserve a lot of credit. I want to highlight my District 2 schools, all the schools in District 2, they did great around, you know, school data. But I specifically want to give a shout out to a few schools that, you know, have really set a very high bar. One is Grady Elementary, you know, number-one elementary school in the district, number seventh in the state, correct, in the state, seventh in the state for traditional public schools. Plant High School, number-one high school in the district. Adem K-8, number-one K-8 in the district. Coleman tied with Walker for number-one middle school in the district. I mean, congratulations to the teachers, the staff, the parents, the community partners that have wrapped their arms around these schools and lifted them up to such, you know, high point. I can only imagine, you know, the amount of work that was put into that, but I know all the schools put their hearts and souls into their schools and school improvement. So everyone deserves congratulations, but I did want to highlight that since, you know, they all came out of my district. So I'm taking a victory lap tonight, because I don't get to do that much. Not that I had any direct correlation with this, but I do have a microphone, and I want to give due where due should be given to those schools in my district. I'm very proud to represent District 2 on the school board, enjoy every moment of it, and how can I not, when, you know, we have such great employees in our schools and in our district offices to work with. You all make my job a lot easier. Thank you. One last thing, since I have no time left, or is the clock, just one last thing, I just want to, I just want to thank One Voice Academy. They had, Patty went out, Member Rendon went out, and I went out. They had a student day where Newsome High School students, they have a One Voice Club. If you don't recall, One Voice is where we have our pediatric cancer classroom. And so Newsome has a huge volunteer organization of 180 students that they run out there throughout the school year, but over the summer, they do a retreat with their board. They have a board, and they are brilliant, and they are passionate about what they're doing, and they're compassionate. And they are, you know, they were reading a book over the summer, and I can't remember the name of it, maybe you do. It's a leadership book, and, you know, we spoke with them just about the wonderful work they're doing in leadership and so forth. So thank you so much to Mary Ann and Sandra for making the invite. I just love being out there, and it is a beautiful place with beautiful people who do some of the hardest work in this district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hahn. Member Combs?
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. Just like a lot of my fellow board members, I want to congratulate everyone, district staff, teachers, I mean, even today when I was talking to a couple of my principals, it's everyone, it's the lunchroom, it's the bus drivers, you know, making sure that child, you know, is studying, or, you know, the cafeteria people, it's everybody working together. It's the parent liaison that was here today, it's everybody working together. So I want to say I'm really, really proud of my schools. I know, I remember when we were going through the boundary change, and I remember being at Sickles High School and having a group, a big room full of people saying, hey, I don't want to go to Smith Middle School, you know, I do not want to go to that school, I need to be rezoned, and look, Smith Middle School's an A. I told Mr. Cleese Saddle today, I said, you are already an A, it's just formal now. So remember, sometimes that grade is not an indication of how you do. Some of the schools that maybe you didn't get that point, or I spoke to someone today who was one point from an A, right? Or those schools that maybe you're one point from a B and you went down a little bit. Just remember, we value, we realize how hard you're working. And I say one thing about this cabinet and the superintendent, I see that you're laser-focused on hiring the right principal. I see that by the people that you're choosing today, I see that by you really looking at who is the most important person who's going to impact the school. It's nobody in this room, it's really the principal at the school. So I really see some laser-focused decisions on that. I see your cabinet coming together and thinking, like, I think about, you know, the talent that Toby has for music, you know, we've always seen that he's so talented. To see that he's going to bring that passion to Blake High School really excites me. Just looking down, I look at, you know, even Leto High School, I'm looking at all the choices that you're making, and I think that is the biggest indication of, you know, who the principal is, is the most important thing. And when you look at those scores, when I look at, like, Menden Hall, and I look at Canela, that are A schools, that, you know, have a hard population, you know, it's challenging. There's not as much affluency, there's a lot of tardiness, you know, a lot of single families, a lot of ELA students, a lot of ESE students, and to see that, you see there's a direct correlation. When I look at that and I pull up the panorama, I see the exact, I see such a linkage. When we talk about the panorama survey, I looked at those school grades, and I looked back at panorama the other day, and there was such a correlation between those, and there's no question about that. So that is very reliable, and it's good for us to look at those schools and see what they did. You know, some of those schools I spoke to today, and I was like, what happened? What did you do? And all the principals to say the same thing, it's the staff, it wasn't me, we worked together. So regardless if your scores went up or not, we're just so proud of the hard work that each and everyone is doing. Thank you to everyone who's doing, you know, summer camp. I went out to West Chase Elementary, I think it was last week, and saw camp spin, and to see all the students out there so active and engaged, it's really important. We don't want that summer slide, we want to continue moving forward. So making sure, we encourage our students to be reading and writing and doing work and staying off, you know, the phone as much as possible. I also want to thank the Florida Department of Education for moving forward to getting rid of cell phones in elementary and middle school. We were already ahead of times, I love to see that, and I'm really curious to see how we move forward towards high school as well. As we move towards, I know we're talking more about looking at cell phones and what that happens, and what's happening at the state level, we need to really continue watching that and monitoring that, because we know, you know, that link together with phones, we're seeing, you know, you're seeing a difference, and I definitely think that the cell phones are making a difference. But I hope that everyone's having a great summer. The last thing that I'd like to say is that I hope sometime in the fall, I'd really like to have a retreat. The financial issues are going to continue to occur. We've got to look at growth management, and having a meeting an hour here, or two hours here, or three hours is not enough. We've got to do a really deep dive, look at, you know, healthcare, look at, you know, growth management, look at some of these big issues and do a retreat, and let's make a move, so that way it doesn't take three or four years. Look at affordable housing for teachers in our urban core. Let's look at these very big issues, and let's make sure that when we come out to ask for that tax referendum, that our voters know that we continue to look at every single way to save every single dollar, to make sure that our money is going back into our students and that you're seeing great results. So I hope everyone has a great summer, and thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. So a lot of what I'm going to say is just going to echo what all the fellow board members have said. I mean, you're not wrong. It's been years of challenges and obstacles, and, you know, the last few meetings, it's been rough. You and your cabinet have had to sit through very high expectations from your board. And to see the kind of growth that we've had, you know, there's amazing things that are happening all the time. I do think we need to get better at highlighting that. Has an email gone out to families already? I know we're talking about Chamber of Commerce in our city, but are our families aware of the growth that we've had already? Has there been a message?
Yeah, we can, so, schools have sent it out, schools, individual schools have sent out their information, but we have not sent something out from us to everybody, but we can, I see the community, Tanya and the team over there. We did send a press release out, we did send a press release out.
Our families should have a letter from us specifically highlighting the work that every person, as everybody's mentioned, this is a heavy lift. And the best thing about this, honestly, have been seeing the people in my individual schools celebrating and being so proud of themselves and congratulating themselves. I mean, it has been just such a boost in morale, because our employees have to sacrifice so much and put so much work into showing up for our students, that when they finally get recognized arbitrarily through a school grade, it just, it boosts morale so much. And to let our families know about the growth that we're having, not just the Chamber of Commerce, but the people who are in our schools, I think is imperative. So I want to say thank you to all of our, every single person in our school. Washington said it so eloquently when he talked about, it's the bus driver who gets the kids safe, it's the paraprofessional who supports us, but it's all the people who are here at 9 o'clock at night, you know, your cabinet takes a lot of heat, people of the district take a lot of heat. Our principals are certainly very absolutely important, but every single person plays a role, including my fellow board members. We all sit up here, and we also take a lot of heat, and we don't always agree, and we have to argue, but it's, we do it because we care about our district and we care about kids, and that's something that's evident in all the work that we do. So, you know, I appreciate your dedication to this district, the hard work from everybody, and even though times are hard, we do need to take our victory lap. Did you say that, Dr. Hahn? We all need to take it, everybody in this district. To go from, as you mentioned, having some of the worst grades in the state to almost being an A, to being one point from an A district from the first time ever, is just, it's testament that no matter what obstacles are put in front of us, our people show up every day to do what they need to do for our kids. And that should be the headline on Hillsborough County. Is reporter still here? You hear that? Okay, good. All right, that's all I have to say about that. So thank you, I concur. I hope everyone's having a great summer, because we're rushing right back into the beginning of the school year. And with that, this meeting's adjourned.